Okay, it is still November 6th. It is 7:06 PM. This is the village work session. Let's see, in attendance tonight, Councilperson Passion, Mayor Sutter. We have our village attorney Jesse Scher. We have...
Village Planner Eric.
Yes, thank you Eric. It's hard when you're on the spot in another room. We have Councilperson Grant. We have our fiscal officer Jeff Wilczek. We have Tony, Mr. Pinter.
Councilperson Jason.
Councilperson Cos, Councilperson Mark and myself, Councilperson Cameron.
That's why I tell everybody to go around with their computer.
My one got off of my, and I used to keep a list in there and then I could just read off of it. But it's...
Okay Jeff, you go first.
Yes Jeff, first I'm gonna talk about Jake.
Early this afternoon, I sent out the appropriation ordinance for 2026. And I sent a document highlighting things that are in the budget. I want to just kind of touch base on some of those tonight. I know you probably haven't had a chance to read through that document, but I tried to highlight some of the major things that are in the budget. A couple of things I need to kind of stress. Income tax collections. As of the November advance that came through, we are now down to two and a half percent increase for the year. We were as high as fifteen percent earlier in the year. So I'm really concerned about where the income tax is headed.
Are you, sorry Jeff.
Go ahead.
Are you looking at a specific document right now that we should follow along?
No. No. But I am going to be talking about a few of the highlight items here, okay?
Is there a way for us to, I'm on screen, lady. Is there a way for us to put it on?
Let me see. This is not truly set to work for me, right?
Oh, sorry Jake.
If you tell me what, I can probably...
Do you get the highlights?
Yes.
Got me here?
How's that?
Oh, that's amazing. Thank you.
Did you see it well enough?
Yes.
Okay, so. The other thing that I recently had to make a change to. We currently are not providing an SRO to Westonville City School District. So I had to take the sixty grand out of the budget that was in there. That's caused a few more problems. I'll show you something, or the five-year projections in a moment here. The other thing, on the revenue side, three point two mil levy is up for renewal next year. We will be starting legislation here fairly soon. In order to put it on, I believe it's the May ballot. So we need to have things approved by, I think it's February 5th roughly, give or take a day. So that's forthcoming. Overall, the budget includes an increase of three and a half percent for salaries and wages, which totals about forty-two thousand five hundred dollars for the year. I actually looked at trying to make that a little bit cheaper and the change that it brought, it's not really worth the change. Pension contributions. Police and Fire is looking at increasing the employer contributions for police from nineteen and a half to twenty-four percent. That's over a five-year period. Budget reflects a three-quarter percent increase on the employer side next year.
Is that required by the state? Is that what you're going to do that?
Yes. Yes, the state is going to... It's a matter of time before they pass it. I mean, it is pending out there. And I think it's three-quarters of a percent increase each year for the next five years till it gets to twenty-four. Healthcare, some good news. Initially, it was looking at a ten, eleven percent increase for the year. I got word today that we are at seven percent.
Oh, it's even better?
The other side goes with this. Major medical insurance is costing us about a hundred ninety-seven thousand roughly for a year. Employees only contribute forty and fifty-five dollars depending upon single versus family. I'm still looking at the healthcare sum because if we choose to change our dental away from Delta Dental to Anthem, which is basically the same coverage, it's about twenty-five percent cheaper for us. On top of that, I get a credit towards our healthcare for another twenty-seven hundred dollars.
My question to that is, how many dentists take that over Delta Dental? I feel like I've always had Delta Dental and I don't know of any dentist that takes it.
Well, Delta Dental is not widely accepted anymore.
I don't accept it where we go, but that's just...
If the dentist is not...
Just see who accepts it. Here's what happens from my perspective. Hey, feature comes in. Hey, I got this other healthcare plan and it's saving me X number of dollars. And then it turns out literally nobody in Columbus accepts this plan.
Looking, I'm checking a few more things with it. Another thing that I was looking at with going to Anthem. Our cap per person is fifteen hundred dollars under our existing policy. I can go up to two thousand dollars. And I'm still saving money.
Yeah.
As long as anything...
So I got a few more things to check out with our broker and make sure of where it goes.
But we don't want to drive to Cincinnati to go to the...
Also, understanding that every year we look at the healthcare to make sure we're getting the best deal we can get. We're still going to stay with Anthem. Currently, we participate with the Westonville Area Chamber of Commerce for small employers and their plan or that they carry. That's how we've been able to get the raise that we've got right now.
And Anthem, and just as a reminder, Anthem, we had Ohio, or what did we have? No, Metal Commutual.
Yes, Metal Commutual.
And the reason that we switched to Anthem is it was a significant decrease to do that because they had gone up like twenty-some percent last year. That's why we switched to Anthem.
I think we're on our second year with Anthem now.
What's your deductible?
Almost seven thousand. It's about seven thousand per in that one. Thirty-five hundred per person. Up to two, yeah. It's like seven thousand. Tanner, I can tell you that.
That's pretty typical, but it's not great.
No, no, it's not great, but it's doable.
It's still considered a high deductible policy.
Which is why we have the agent.
It's, I want to say it's like thirty-four hundred for single and
It's usually thirty-five.
Sixty-five or seven for...
It's like close to seven for male.
I do believe that's going up slightly this year.
I mean, it's better than not again.
There was discussion in the finance committee about uniform allowance for police. We're going to keep it at eight hundred and Fleming's controlling what goes on in the ordering. Moving it to eleven hundred, it would have been paid to them twice a year, half and half, but they were responsible for the uniforms. It just wasn't going to overwhelm, so.
They didn't...
That was just conversation amongst everybody here. There's two police crews in the budget for next year because the K-9 did not get replaced this year. Partly because of the vendor. So we're looking at that for next year, though we do. And we'll see what happens there in Anthem, okay?
We're gonna find a discount with two.
The K-9 one is a bit more expensive for a year as well, too. Fire contract, it's limited to a five percent increase every year with Columbus. So we are going to be at two hundred eighty-two thousand six hundred next year. I think we're reaching a point where that's going to come up to review with them. I still think five percent increases is rather expensive.
But the first time we did it, they wouldn't even give us a cap.
Oh, it was very expensive in the budget, which we're running eleven percent.
So five percent was a win at the time?
Capital outline wise, there are more boundaries, budget different pool.
Those are the handicap ones that we talked about, yeah?
The landscape contract. We've got the RFPs, two responses back in. There was only two that came in. We're looking at one that's about eighteen thousand four hundred dollars. And that's actually going to be split between three different places because it involves heartland, it involves pool, and then the land around the municipal building here. That's still in review. We haven't made a final decision there yet. I'm looking at, and there will still be more discussion on it. The small room that's outside the copier. We need to convert that into a conference room so we have a place we can go where we can actually talk to people without interrupting everybody else, okay? Transfers out. I've been adjusting that number, but right now it stands where a hundred thousand will be transferred to the pool improvement fund. That's going to help offset the cost of the utilities that we're having to address that is part of the pool improvements. And that's both water sewer and sanitary.
Jeff, do you wanna... I don't know that everyone understands. Because only you and I had that conversation.
Yeah. In conversations with Brad Satter, Carol, we're finding out that there needs to be a six-inch water line running into the pool. The water line on Valley is going to be changed as part of the Valley Road project. Columbus requires that to be an eight-inch line. So we don't have a problem getting it supplied, but there will be a point where there's a, we have to connect into that eight-inch line. And we're at the top of the valley. So we're gonna have to run it a fair distance to get it over into the pool. And we're also gonna have to look into where we run it so we don't interfere with future projects, etc., okay? Recommended, there was a six-inch line recommended for sanitary sewer. Our engineer's a little concerned as to what all's going to flow through and how much. And how much of an impact it could have up the line with the existing houses that are over there off of Ponderosa. May not be the right place.
The courts back in there overlook some of those.
There's a handful of homes that feed into a line that runs down through there. The pool, so we're looking at that. Plus, we have to look at storm sewers. Storm sewer side. Make sure we have adequate size there. Part of those improvements are going to be incorporated into the Valley Road project at this point.
So basically, just to kind of sum up the conversation. Mike did not anticipate as large of a need as what the architect is saying that we should have for the pool.
Didn't he ask about that?
And because of that, it's going to cause the Valley Road project to cost a little bit more. And we can't get it completed in the timetable before the pool opens next year. So we're gonna have to push it to after the pool closes, which will coincide with the construction of the building, but it should not interfere with construction.
And I did verify that with... There will be an additional three hundred thousand transferred to the street improvement fund to help cover some of the street improvements that are out there, which I'll touch on a little shortly here. And an additional two hundred thousand to the storm sewer improvement fund.
Thank you.
I haven't got to that part yet. That pretty much covers what's going on with the general fund. Other funds and projects. Valley Road, as we touched on already, that project is, the scope of it has increased and so has its budget. We're somewhere between maybe two hundred to fifty thousand. North Lake Court, the water line will be replaced next year.
North Lake Court?
That's up off of Kerwood and East Shore.
The second one?
Yes.
Okay.
So, again, minimum size is an eight-inch water line. But in order for that water line to get connected, part of East Shore's going to be torn up.
Yeah, I think we should size it up.
East Shore's gonna end up getting repaved or at least a portion of it re-discovered. And at the same time, we're going to do a mill and fill, it's called.
Take out the...
And take out the settlement.
I kinda like it.
Yeah, there's a couple courts that are horrible.
Put a fountain in there.
That one's horrible. That island is horrible. I mean, absolutely.
If the courts were bigger, it would work, but trends have changed since those were put in and
I mean, I like it.
Vehicles trying to get in and out and people with more cars parking on the street, it's just not practical.
And a failure to maintain them.
Failure to maintain, I feel like...
Yeah, because they're village property. It's our property. It's ours.
And that's on us.
Yeah.
I see the potential. As with anything that's dilapidated and old, I see the potential. And no budgets. No budgets. Yeah, and no budget, so.
So bathhouse is going to be replaced, starting in the fall next year. So keep in mind that we have a budget of basically seven hundred thousand dollars. Three hundred forty-five thousand of it is covered by a grant. That's good. We are looking at a grant for pool improvements. And that's gonna take place following year. There's also some legislation will be forthcoming to address Brad Satter, Carol starting to do the plans for the pool renovations. He's looking at trying to live within the two million dollar budget that we're gonna have. It could change a little bit depending upon whether we get a grant. But either way, that is going to result in potentially a bond sale next year payable from income tax. And that's already factored into the general fund budget.
So in order to get the grants, we have to provide a little more documentation as to what we're gonna build. And that's why we're looking to have Brad Satter start the plans for the pool portion as well. And in order to do that, we'll have to do the bond sales next year.
Wait, can you translate that into people who don't know anything about budgets? Does that mean like a tax increase? Or what does that mean?
No.
What does that mean? Can you translate?
It's taken apart.
What's a bond sale?
If we will sell bonds and they will be retired with income tax proceeds. So what I'm essentially doing is allocating a portion of the income tax that was going to general fund to debt service to pay the bonds.
So it's just...
Hundred forty-five thousand.
We're just moving money around?
It's a loan.
Okay, that's fine.
The bonds is a loan to us and then we're paying the loan back.
Okay, got it.
Payable from the income tax, so there is no...
So we're just, okay, we're saying we're gonna make this money, give us this, okay. I am a doctor. I will figure it out.
Erosion beyond the dam, there's two places along the tunnel. That is currently being looked at engineering wise with Mike Flickinger and Jacobs. Pavement condition report, I believe that's about four years old now. That is planned to be updated next year. CCTV project, where we look into the storm and sanitary sewers. There is money in the budget for that to continue next year. I'm not sure what happened with this year on it.
We haven't fixed the three previous CCTV project. We have like a two hundred thousand dollar project that we haven't done yet. So to do more that we haven't done, this didn't make sense.
What is it, like we're a year behind because?
We haven't fixed the ones from the previous. We found these deficiencies and these deficiencies. We were combining those together. We didn't have the money to do them last year. We have to get that project done and do a CCTV this year. But there was no reason to do another CCTV, add even more to that project because we didn't have the money to do this project.
But also, I asked Michael and he said it wasn't like urgent.
No, I mean, we've gone through the whole, we fixed all of the failing at this point. These were the last of the last. And then I think most of them are probably gonna come in at a, could be done.
We probably should just do it.
Oh yeah, I would.
Do we have money for that?
Yes, the CCTV.
There's money in the storm sewer improvement fund for it. And there's some money in the sewer maintenance fund for the sanitary.
The number one thing we need to do is get the repairs fixed.
Yeah.
First.
We're looking at two hundred, maybe two hundred fifty thousand projects. Really, it's the repairs and not replacing a significant chunk of the land.
No, just repairs.
But they're expensive repairs.
So we need to make sure that when they do this, we let everybody in and put their toilet lids down.
Yes. Let's get some signs made up.
I took all, I know.
Offense, toilets down this week?
Toilets down weekend.
What time are you gonna pump air into my toilet? Tuesday, two o'clock. I don't know.
I missed it this last week.
I want an indoor fountain. I'm not closing anything.
I cleaned water up.
I'm not closing anything. I want a water feature, whatever.
It'll make you clean the floors in your bathroom for all to get out. If you haven't done it, I don't know why I'm asking you.
I have a bidet too. My cat uses it.
Last thing I want to...
Go ahead. No, I was just reading ahead.
Patchways and sidewalks that's hanging out there. And, you know, I don't know what to do with that or how much money or anything.
We want those million dollars.
Here's my opinion, and then everyone else can chime in, is when we have been writing that we have this money, let's go ahead. But still, we have that...
But is it like we have to have something where we're like, we assemble it to a plan in order to get the money? Where, no?
You'll have your agreement. I sent it over to Jesse the other week. So you have your agreement, your link us agreement to act on. We're gonna put it on the next reading. So we can have first reading. We get through the region at the end of the year. Just working on ODNR to get your second part of that because you've got a five fifty from the link us folks that you'll get January 1st. And then we're trying to get an agreement on the quit from ODNR, so we have other two fifty.
I have another question about that. So, okay, so I like to think outside the box. Say you technically striped the street to be like, this is a pedestrian bike area. Does that count?
Yes, you could do something like that, but we wouldn't recommend you do that because that's kind of, you're gonna get people hit in our thin streets, you know, those... If Columbus decides you've got to go wider in order to act, to have room for a bike lane.
I understand that, but that counts, just in case.
I'm not clear where we're going with this.
So there are times, and I don't know if this would work on MLR, but just like when I'm thinking about streets, are there any parts where we say, okay, we don't have room for a sidewalk or whatever? We strike part of the street as like a bike path and we put up like little path.
No, we're not gonna, A, you're gonna have room, B, you wouldn't...
But does it count for the...
I don't know the answer to that because that's not gonna be, it's gonna be, you don't have pedestrians walking back into the street even on a striped pathway and not get them injured or killed. So that's not gonna be something that's gonna be allowed. Yeah, that part's probably gonna be a no once they get a hold of that. We're gonna engineer the passes we're supposed to and submit it and then, you know, we're going to go through it. So that's how it's gonna happen.
All right, so can you just look into that? So if I talk to the engineer, will he brainstorm like a way to do it?
I don't know why we're doing that.
I just want to know the answer.
The answer's gonna be yes under circumstances in which you have complete bike path action. Because you'd have to have a lane, have to be engineered, you'd have to then stripe the space. We have no parking along a certain section. So the answer is yes, under certain conditions. That's the answer.
But we would still get the link us money if we were to do that?
You would get the link, again, the link us money is going to be sufficient for what we're talking about. And so the answer is if you need to do something like that, which directs bike pathway stuff theoretically, I'll back onto the roadway and we stripe it, lane it, light it properly. We do everything that's required under the best practices. So the answer is yes, it would count towards the overall pathway because we've demonstrated it through a plan, right? We demonstrate it through the engineered plan. So if it comes to that and we have to do it, yes. I'm telling you, probably, I'm gonna say ninety percent likelihood because I'm gonna leave myself a little room where, because we haven't engineered it yet. Not gonna need to do that.
And you would say you don't recommend that as well?
Well, I'm gonna likely say not. We definitely aren't gonna put people back into the street and take them back off the street. That's a new...
I think it's just ask the question and find the answer.
Right, I just want to make sure we're not veering into an area that I can think of the best way to do it.
She's independently asking this question.
I know, that's what I'm concerned about.
I don't know if other people agree with her.
Understood.
Anybody who agrees with asking the question?
Understood.
All I want to know is if there is a place that I'm looking at with there, it is almost next to impossible to say put a sidewalk in, but there is a street there. Is there an option for us to take that section and say, okay, we're gonna take the sidewalk there and connect another part?
So I think my only, and I'm just making sure I understand what you're asking.
I think there's a theoretical...
I'm not judging. Technically, it would be one of the lanes, essentially, because you're not making it bigger.
Right, so we're on a hypothetical, but the answer hypothetically is yes. The likelihood is a very small, I'm gonna say almost zero. Because I've looked at all the pathway, everything can be engineered. It may cost a little more money to make it happen along a certain section, but it can happen and we've got the money for it.
I understand that. I'm just looking at it from an aesthetic standpoint.
Aesthetics are not best practice. We're not gonna... Engineering is not gonna make people go back, you know, because something doesn't look the best. I'm just gonna put it that way.
You have to engineer the road and not a person pathway, so now you have...
So I think the question would be is would people actually try to use it and get hit by a car?
If they went back into the street, they would. If they go back, if we bring them back into the street, that's the problem. We're not gonna bring them back into the street. That's not gonna happen.
I mean, I don't want people walking on Cleveland Avenue.
No one's gonna be walking on Cleveland Avenue, obviously not. No one's gonna be walking back into Minerva Park from the pathway and then get into a problem without proper safety situations.
I think it's nice to know the option. If we run into a sticky situation down the road and we're like, look, this isn't what we recommend, but this could be an alternative.
Yes, that's why we do the engineering.
Yes.
And that's why when we come up to the problem, there'll be an option. If we actually run into an odd situation, there may be an A and B. That's where we run into that.
Sorry Jeff, we've kind of interrupted you.
So the, your answer is? Yes, we're gonna put something in front of you and then put something else in front of you and we will have, that way he can fill in his budget.
The last thing I want to point out on the budget. Every year and during the year, I'm looking out five years on this. So twenty-six through twenty-thirty, five-year period. To make sure we can afford to do certain things that we're not going to create financial problems for ourselves. The forecasted part of this being the twenty-seven through thirty is pretty much a three percent increase going out with the exception of a few things that are a bit higher, such as healthcare. What I want to point out here is we have a concern that we have to be aware of. And that is, beginning in twenty-twenty-eight, we are not maintaining the carryover balance that we are trying to do. Our carryover balance is only twenty-five percent of the budget. So as that balance decreases, it's a bit of a concern. We need to be thinking about what we can do in twenty-six and twenty-seven to get rid of the red out there in those twenty years. Whether we make changes to the budget somewhere or whether we try to open resources of revenue. That's all things for us to look at.
It's probably a combination.
Yes.
I think knowing twenty-twenty-eight is the year we go to the deficit.
It's not a deficit.
Not deficit, right? We are not hitting our goal.
Correct.
Our financial goal. I think that gives us a target for potentially redevelopment Cleveland Avenue. Is it realistic to have it done by then? Probably not. But I think it helps us have some conversations with developers on timeline.
We can make it juicy if we need to.
I just bring that up to say, as we continue to have work sessions, we probably need to have more conversations on that.
The other side too is, this is twenty-six is going to be, last year we'll have a balance that I can transfer out to capital project funds for improvements. Now, there's still projects that can be taken on in twenty-seven such as another leg in the River Lake Road because I have other funds available such as permissive motor vehicle license fees to a tune of about a hundred and sixty thousand with county engineer. We have some funds in our books that we can utilize for those projects too. So some projects won't stop, but we're actually getting to an end where we have the dollars to take on major capital projects. So it's, besides the general fund and its operations, we've got to figure out how we're gonna deal with some of our capital projects downwind. But again, I bring this to your attention so that we're thinking about it. And we need to think about things we take on and the effect it has on this.
We've already talked about a couple different things that we think could potentially help. Not ready to share some of those things, but only because where we're sitting is not a good time to talk about it. But we've talked about a couple different things that over the next six months, maybe we can fine-line a couple different areas. No, you guys aren't getting fired. I'm just saying.
I don't like the red. I don't like it.
And obviously, we mentioned revenue, but expenditures, right? Is going to be...
Yeah, there's no real fat built into any of the departments as to where we spend our money. It's a little bit of an increase from last year, but nothing horrific. And again, our biggest cost is our personnel.
And in fairness, I mean, we don't have a lot of personnel, especially upstairs. We have one full-time person. is the biggest reminder, and this isn't a bash, but when we start talking about bringing on another person for this, or bringing on another person for this, you guys are already seeing the numbers, and that's the things that we know, that, you know, when you guys start, and you guys have great ideas, and we have great ideas, and I'd love to see six more people, but we're already all part-time, we're not paying insurance, we're not paying this, bringing in just one more person is gonna put that to, you know, I mean, it's just like, what, how much is a one full-time officer, remind me?
Probably a hundred and thirty thousand.
Hundred and thirty thousand dollars is roughly one full-time.
Intern, like the intern officer.
Well, and we've talked, we've talked about that, and I don't wanna go crazy in that, but I'm just reminding everybody that we already only have one full-time person in all of upstairs from maintenance to every, you know, unless we can cut Jesse's hours down, but.
We're getting an intern.
Unfortunately, I think his bill's about to go up.
We're getting a clerk for that time, what could go wrong?
I'm teeing, I'm totally teeing, so, off topic.
Just to give you a feel, including the transfers out, we're looking at three million nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for general fund budget. Of that, keep in mind, there's six hundred thousand dollars being transferred out, so you're looking at three point, what, three point three roughly? Two million fifty thousand is salaries and benefits.
Mine is this much of it FYI, and so is yours, so just remember that.
I think it's, I think it's all here.
I just get so nervous when something.
So, in, in addressing.
That's what makes me nervous.
In addressing a concern too, that's why we look out five years, that's why we have a carry, we try to need to carry over balance, so we've got a little bit of a buffer to allow us some time to really address a significant situation.
Do you have any suggestions? I just don't like the red.
I mean, we've talked about certain things, I'm not, I don't, I don't know that it's fair to go, I mean, I think we know where we spend our money.
Like, are we already planning, and is, are these realistic ways to get out of this sitch? Like, do we have good ideas? Do you feel like you have a real plan?
Not solely for that much money once you hit 2028, but, you know, as we start getting to that point, you know.
The numbers for, for 2026 are solid.
Yeah, I know, but there's.
I, I think that there are some things that we have rolled around that could help us in 2028. And make 2029 look a little better, but, but is it, are we ready to have those conversations tonight? Probably not.
I think that's where I'm at, yes.
That's true.
It's my budget anxiety, I just don't know.
I mean, I feel like some of the ones Jeff and I have talked about is tens of thousands of dollars potentially of savings that, you know, we're not talking about ten grand, we're talking about quite a bit of money, but I think we're just premature in talking about that yet.
And this looks at exactly where we are right now, it doesn't take into account any potential pending legislation that might be happening at the state level, so stuff that happens at the state level could very seriously.
For example.
We might not have.
There's a bill out there, and I don't know which one it is, that defines the existence of a village and you require to have so many services you provide.
Yeah.
That's one.
We'll have that fixed.
More problem is, a building's out there that enables a resident to bring forth a referendum to force an income tax credit. If that was to happen and the credit was 2%, income tax drops from 2.4 million to 700,000 dollars. You only have half million dollars in property taxes, that's 1.2 million revenue to general fund. Place department is gonna go bye-bye.
Okay, so, so we just wanna know.
And a number of other things.
When they become closer to.
If, yeah, if it happens, then there's gotta be a, an active council pack, everything to, all hands on deck to prevent that from, people understand what they lose.
Yeah, we will have time to address and try to respond to it, but depending upon what all they do, we'll determine how fast and, and then the continuum exists, I think saying that.
Very quickly, and I know I'm not the finance committee, but I was, you would mention a replacement for the next one, have you considered a, or it was you were the renewal, but what about a replacement?
That is something that, he talks about, we have levy that's up for renewal next year, we can look at, if we renew it, everything stays as it is, we continue to collect the same amount of revenue, which I believe is about a hundred and twenty thousand or so on, from recalling which one's which, okay? Your other option is, you flat out, that one expires, you go for a new levy, that would generate new revenue. Third option you have is you do a renewal with additional mileage. The idea of keeping the renewal is there's twelve and a half percent credit that the state gives property owners on their property taxes that's tied to that levy, if you drop the levy, you drop the twelve and a half percent rollbacks that exist, okay? Any new levy does not have the rollbacks on it, so renewal with an increase would be more favorable to the property owners, but it's something for us to look at there.
This is just a thought, like an alternative for, I hate raising revenues, but I keep saying.
Yeah, so the other thing that we can do is, yes, if you, you can split that levy into two pieces, one, to keep the general fund portion of revenue, and two, start generating some property tax revenue to use for some of the projects, okay? That's an alternative, an option there too, and then that money is restricted, it can only be used for certain things.
And that would, that would change those numbers that you have up on the screen as well, slightly.
I think it would probably keep us on the same capital right now.
I just think about the current environment with the last election, where some things actually like ruin, there seems to be favorability towards supporting. The communities that are near. If it makes more sense to, I don't know, to do it now versus, wait, it may not be in two years. I don't know, I'm just.
You can also look at the income tax, I hate saying that one, but, you know, a lot of the cities around here are over 2%. And we've been at 2% since middle teens, I think.
Fifteen or.
And then keep in mind, those have credits.
No.
That's the only thing.
That's the issue with that, they have credits.
2% here has no credit which supports your thing, you know, do it, so, no credit.
It's double, I mean.
It'll be a problem.
Can't afford to give a credit because.
You do it two and a half, a half percent.
So it's not gonna get you anything.
I mean, it's trying.
It looks pretty.
Okay, any questions for Jeff?
I do have a lot more detail that backs up all these numbers if you wanted to see it.
So, in the finance committee, Jeff's done a great job for us over the last three months, frankly, where we've been able to go everything, there's only a few things that were surprised of the village, obviously the Valley View, Valley Road, wherever that is, that was a surprise, right, obviously, and then there's a few smaller things that, you know, I, I just wanted to say that, that he's done a great job of presenting that for, over the last couple of months.
But also, I need money.
Or we need to cut expenses.
Yeah, but we can't, streets, you can't cut streets, you can't.
Agreed on that.
Okay. Otherwise, you're getting show.
We have time to look at this and come up with.
Freaking me out, all this bunch of talk.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that was really, I mean, I'm not.
Okay, next up is.
Jesse Erickson.
More fun stuff.
Jesse Erickson.
Are there jokes in here?
Jokes? Is this a musical?
I'll have some jokes.
Oh, sweet. Tulsa game.
How are we gonna pay attention to being jokes?
I'll make some, maybe give some time.
He's just warming up.
At minute six or seven.
Thank you, are you coming tomorrow?
No.
Me either, okay, take your shirt.
I have wood for a Supreme law.
Well, mine's not that exciting, I'll be honest with you, so.
God bless you.
That was just my, my feet.
Oh. It's been roughly.
Oh, no, where is he?
Riverside.
I see what I have, I know people.
He's better than he was.
Alright. I just all set up and Jeff hits it all, but I'm like, what are you doing?
I like to call it a night.
I came.
I know, one second, I'm trying to get to the content, there's a good one. Um, just as you're teeing up, unless, unless one of you wants to start without it.
That's correct.
Yeah, you can bring your, you know, topics, I'll, I'll straighten up, I'll catch up to you as soon as I get this rectified.
Alright. Charter, key topics, you all got this, so read it word for word, but what is a charter? How do we get the board in place to determine if we wanna impose a charter? What does that review commission look like, and then what are pros and cons of it, and a quick timeline? So, very simple, charter is your constitution, right now, we're a statutory village, so all of our procedures are outlined in the revised code title seven, chapter seven thirteen to seven forty, sort of, you have to follow what is laid out in the state law. If you have your own charter, you can adopt procedures or policies that are counter to the state law, and as long as you follow whatever's in your charter, you're good to go. So, it provides a lot of flexibility, and this is what people are talking about, really, when they talk about home rule. So, there is some, like, there's a fair bit of new ones there, where even like a statutory village has some home rule authority, where you're governing stuff that happens solely within your borders, but what it really means is you have a charter and you have essentially imposed your own rules on your process. So, the first step is you have to pass, you as city council, village council has to pass a resolution asking whether a charter review commission should be formed, that goes on the ballot, we'll talk timeline here at the end, but if we pass that by the first meeting in February, although I'd like to err on the side of caution, so second meeting in January, that would go on the ballot in the May primary, so that would be good.
And just a follow-up to that is, I know Jesse, not Jesse, sorry, Jeff was, raised the question, or the question came up because we would have to pay for putting it on the ballot because of the election year next year, it wouldn't be that bad for us to put it on the spring ballot. So, so the cost of the village to get it on that spring ballot is not as big as it could be in other years because of the election.
One of the years it costs us almost $10,000, I put something on the ballot.
But i- if you did it like this May, eight months ago, when there's no real primary out there, you just, it basically becomes a special election.
So, timing wise, timing wise, it's gonna cost us a little less to put it on the ballot in May this year.
And this is a really dumb question, why does it cost that much money?
You split it between the other communities around that have certain things on the ballot, because you're essentially having a special election, so you're.
Still, we're not paying for the full.
It's a state, it's a state, it's a state law.
Yeah, 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 just do it.
It's a tax write-off.
Yeah, write it off.
They changed it a few years ago.
They did, yeah.
And we got bit with it right after it changed, because we actually, it was an expense that we were not prepared for.
I thought that was.
It was a big old surprise, I think that was about, six, three years ago.
Well, that's, okay, well, that's good to know.
Yep.
We need it, because it costs more than I have.
Exactly, and so at that, May, so there's basically, it's sort of a two path, two-step process at the, what would be next May? There would be the threshold question of should we form a charter review commission, and then there would be fifteen or more names on the ballot.
In November.
In May.
Oh, so we, we can do that too.
They ask the question first, and then all the people are on.
Yep, yep, and so that way you'd be up and running, assuming that that passes, the top fifteen vote getters would be ready to go the next day, soon as it's certified, yep. Giant, so all of this comes from article eighteen, section eight of the Ohio constitution, sort of lays out all the timing and everything. So yes, you pass a resolution by two-thirds vote of council, it's a very simple question, shall a commission be chosen to frame a charter? Yes or no, that's the ballot question, and then you have up to, or fifteen or more members on the charter commission, so we have to find fifteen names to get on the ballot, or else.
Who selects those fifteen names and how do you have them on the ballot?
You have to apply, it's the same, you, you, go ahead.
I didn't get elected, if I recall, last time, they did get to council points.
Yes, that did happen.
Oh, okay, cool, okay, that, maybe they're, I, I just wanted, so, they have, you have to have fifteen on the commission, yeah, perhaps, yeah, yes.
So I think that, if I recall correctly, that was discussed.
So, the way that it works is, I do believe you had to still get your ten signatures or whatever to be placed one of those names on the ballot, we don't get to pick those names, if I recall.
That is right.
Does anybody, is that right?
You go out, yes.
Yeah, you all have to do, get it on there.
Yes.
Excuse us. No, that's not what I'm saying, where's ours? Um, so yes, so then, people have to apply to be put on there in May as well.
Yep.
And they just, I think, you go to the board of elections and get your application.
We have a little bit of sheet.
Tiny sheet, yep, get your signatures, turn it in, you're on.
Get more than ten, everybody have a little party, and just have everybody sign each other.
That's right. If it passes by a majority, good to go, we start the process, the charter review commission convenes, get together, and we just start sort of talking about this, providing examples, seeing, you know, sort of a framework of what you wanna do, what type of, you know, very broad question, like what form of government do you want, do you wanna village administrate, do you wanna part-time, maybe that type of thing, so, all of that. Step three, once you've, they've come to their conclusion, the, the charter review commission council then passes a resolution placing the proposed charter on the ballot, so for a first time, there's no discretion there, so whatever the charter review commission sends up to you, you have to send to the ballot, a lot of times, I'll, we'll work with cities where they're doing a charter review of an existing charter, and what you'll see is that many charters, and you may wanna consider this, have language that say, upon the five-year review, council has discretion ultimately over the recommendation, so you go convene a charter review commission, they'll make a bunch of suggestions, and then council gets to sort of strike out what they don't wanna send on to the ballot, so that's something you can bake into your actual charter if it's passed. Uh, then we vote on it, majority vote passes it, and then it takes effect on the date set forth in that actual charter, so we'll have that conversation as we go, one makes the most sense for election timing and that type of thing. Anybody in the village can do it.
Like, people, like, do you have to live there for a certain amount of time, like, you know how you, if you, if you live there for less than a year, you can't run for office or whatever, is there like a?
I think there is, it's a one year, that's, yeah, so you have to have been here a year.
And you have to be registered voter, can you be anybody?
Do you have to pay taxes?
Yeah. No, but that's something you can put in the charter.
Sure is something you can put in the charter, sure is something you can put in the charter, uh, yes.
Thank you, I'm just always looking ahead, just trying.
So, it has to, you have to, the timing, the important timing is, from the February or the May election, you have one year to do the commission, draft it, vote on it by the commission, have council send it to the ballot, and then get it on the ballot, so you have to, all that has to be commissioned one year, should not be a problem.
So, is there the possibility, and I'm just asking, depending on how great this group of fifteen is, could they potentially get it on by November and have to be done by August? So, it depends on how much time they wanna put into it, if they even wanted to.
They could, they could, they want to, yeah.
But.
Because if they go to the ballot the next year, we're gonna pay more for it to be on the ballot, yeah.
Right, that's right, yep.
So there's a financial significance to have it on the fall ballot as opposed to the spring.
But that would only give you June and July.
You would have to, you'd have to the following year, because that's the way we did it, and I'll go through it on my side of the presentation.
Yeah, but you could, yeah.
No, I'm just saying, have to the following year, I'm just saying.
But do you have till the following November or just following May?
Following November.
Oh, November, not May.
Even if we put it on.
You, the council has to put it, council, so, so in my example, which I will get to, but I'm jumping ahead a little bit. The council had to act on it in a certain amount of time, they acted on it by July 30th of that year to put it on the November of 2019, we put, we voted on it, the question was put to the voters in 2018, and then July 30th, council, ahead of the deadline.
Yep.
Put it back for the November of 19, so, November to November.
We don't have a, we don't have to, like, based on how our timing goes, we then don't have a duty to pop up a special election and pay for it, just because we have to get it done quicker, we just had to act on it and say, put it on that next ballot.
But if they really wanted to get things done, if they, I don't know who those fifteen people are or anything, but they could get it done in two months if they want, really wanted to try.
It's a very, it's a very fast timeline, but yes, you could, but we can, we'll add that to my discussion here.
So, pros, cons, pros, it, it's all about customization to what you think works best for you, so you can, for example, the revised code requires three readings of all resolutions and ordinances, you can chop that down to two for ordinances, one for resolutions, you can specify what types of. You can specify what types of, uh, legislative actions are effective immediately, so you don't have to necessarily declare an emergency, but you can say, anything that does X, Y, or Z, that's effective immediately, so that sort of referendum on them. Um, you can, and this is a good one, always comes up, you can customize your competitive bidding procedure and thresholds.
Yeah.
Which is great because it's, they've finally raised it a little bit this year, but it's still poultry, yeah. Uh, you can establish formulas for elected official salaries, so you don't have to constantly have that conversation about giving yourself a raise and feeling guilty about it, blah, blah, just sort of tied to everything. And then staffing, so you can set up how, basically how you want the government. Cons, it's, it can get complicated, it can be really hard to do it in two months, especially when you have fifteen people with different ideas. Uh, and then amending, it can be difficult. So, if you get yourself down the road here, we pass it, and somebody doesn't see something, or we, the only way to change it then is to wait for the baked-in review process that we will, you know, that we will bake into this, so I would say every five years, you do a charter review, some of them are ten. You do every five, that way.
Could you do a charter review for the first time after a year in case you miss something, or is that?
Sure.
Like, you could build in that we have a charter review, like, the first year, and then it goes to five years after that or something?
Yeah. 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 You do whatever you want, that's the, the big problem, right?
I love it, you can do whatever you want.
Do whatever you want, just write it down.
You can't change anything in it until the review.
Right.
So, if you set it up that there's six council people and you decide you wanna go to four,
You gotta wait.
you have to wait until that review period to do that, is that, or is that kind of, is it?
If you, if you set the charter, well, like, wait, tell me that again.
So, let's say the charter set up that there's six council members, but then all of a sudden, everyone's like, we really don't need six, let's go down to four.
Yep.
You have to wait till the review period.
Yes, yep, and then somebody would have to get on that charter review commission and say, I wanna bring forward the idea that we only need four council members, and then you would put a redline version in, and then it would come back to council.
But council can be like, nah.
If you, if you build one for them.
Okay.
Yep.
Does that go to the voters to change?
Yes.
Just, I guess I saw that the Western Village.
That's where it's going now.
Yeah, that's how, and I wish that's the case this year too, uh, and they're past it, sort of, yeah.
Cool.
Yep.
But it keeps up with your honest opinion.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
Oh, yeah, timeline, oh, yeah, here, um. So, there we go, yeah, if we file it with the Board of Elections by February fourth, uh, that would, the election would be made Cinco de Mayo, it's fun.
That's a great day.
That's a great day.
That's a great day to vote, yes.
I see school.
And then, we, we built in, uh, the May twenty twenty seven election. That was sort of our thought, cuz that would also be another cheap one where you wouldn't have to pay extra for it. So, that gives us a little more than two months' time, but it's not.
Okay, either one.
Uh, and then they would put it on May twenty twenty seven, and you would, we would, again, we would pick the date when we wanted to become effective.
Okay.
So, uh, let's just say, so if it, if it were to fail in the May twenty twenty seven election, it starts over.
Doesn't. It doesn't affect, it just, you, you have what you have.
Yeah, you, but you would have to run it up, pass another resolution to form a charter.
Right.
So, if one of the villages didn't fail, and now we have to start.
This is not unusual, right?
So, the first question that I have is, is if you, again, I'm not trying to get the, I mean, I, I still have a job until whenever, hopefully. Um, maybe I don't, if the charter passes, it could be, so anyways, um, you guys can fire me. If you did it in November, okay, again, I'm going back to this November.
You did it in November twenty six.
Twenty six, could you still, since you're within that year, can you bring it back up in May as your second chance at it within that? Do you see where I'm going with this? If, like our levy, if it, if we put it on the ballot.
Yeah, and it fails.
In May, it fails, can we do it again in December? Like, let's say everybody hated the fact that the mayor is, still exists, and they don't want a mayor, and so it fails. So, then you guys are like, okay, sucks to be you, you know, whatever.
I would, I honestly, I've never looked at, I would think you could, it's, you, you should fail if you're within the year, yeah.
Yeah.
If you're within the year. So, that would save you a lot of money if that happened.
I wanna, I wanna, I'm a planning kinda girl.
Again, I don't know that you could do it, I'm just merely saying, I, that was just a question.
I have that idea though.
I like that idea too.
Yeah.
You'd have two chances.
If that's possible.
And it's still on, brushing everybody's mind.
That was my, that was my biggest contribution to you guys.
But it's, it's possible.
Thank you, that was a good question.
Eric, uh, so, what were some of the downfalls again for the last one?
I'm gonna, yep, I'm gonna jump.
Sorry, forgive me, I just.
Once, once questions are done for Jesse, I have the next fun part.
Thank you, sorry about that.
I guess my thing is.
No, it's no worries.
Just a quick thing, I think I know the answer to this, what really went wrong last year.
That's in his next, he failed.
That's yours, you got a whole thing, okay, and then, here's my Jesse question is, all the things, all the trials and tribulations that we've gone through, if we had a charter, just as a talking point to the neighbors and stuff, if we had a charter.
You're talking about marketing.
I'm, yeah, I'm talking about marketing, what could we have protected ourselves against?
I think that's gonna go back to Jesse.
We do.
Well, like, legal.
I'm already on step two, I'm like.
Yeah, yeah, I wanna know.
Jessica, we wanna hear where, where it failed.
Yeah.
It's a hard question, you can have.
It is, I mean, you.
The village can't go without, he has to do factual stuff, obviously.
Well, right.
And so, but the re- the residents, the elected officials can form their own little, little charter path, and advertise for that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, but I'm thinking is like, there are some things that have happened, and I have been told that if we were in charter, that there would be a home rule that would apply to us, and therefore, we would have a leg to stand on.
That is correct, in certain situations, that is correct.
The referendum on the old building, we wouldn't be sitting here right now.
No, we wouldn't.
If the referendum of buying the Cleveland Avenue one, you could have.
On the, yeah.
On our own, on our charter, you could have had that, and it would have been effective immediately, and then it would have.
You would have had a million and a half more dollars back to the pool, whatever it was.
Or you, I have so many more allergies now.
Okay, or you could have put something in there to protect yourself from that, so the charter could have either gone that way or the other way. So, and I'm not gonna get into that, there was one question I have before you get to your thing, and it was.
But all those things, maybe you think about it, I don't really wanna put that in there.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So, let's just say, as in hypothetical right now, we pass it in November next year, and we put a one-year.
Review.
Review in it, does it have to be in effect for a year before we can review it? So, let's just say that we pass it in November to start in the twenty twenty eight.
November one, motorcycle.
When the mayor's term is up, right?
Yep.
And we put a one-year review in it, is the one year from when it goes into effect, or from when we pass it?
You can write it however you want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we could write it.
Much discussion.
I probably, honestly, though, you probably want it to be a whole year to figure out all your, like, mistakes to give yourself enough time to be like, oh, that was bad, or just clear this up, instead of being.
My thinking, my thinking is, if we fast track it till we get it passed in November, right?
You might have a fix.
We still, the next year, we could fix things if we needed to before it actually goes into effect.
I don't think that's how that works.
He said we could.
You could, if you're on that one, yeah.
There's many things you could do.
All right, but a trial.
Not, not a trial.
The only problem, I guess the only problem would be is if it wasn't in effect, would you know?
Right.
It was a problem.
It was a problem.
Would not, that would be my argument.
Right.
We would.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Drive, you wanna test drive it.
But, but you could once a month go, okay, how would this have affected this?
Sure, that's sure.
You could literally have a meeting every single month and say, okay, how would all of this legislation have affected the village if we would have had a charter? And I mean, honestly, you could have been doing that this year, if you would have had a charter, what could you have put in that charter to make this work?
Yeah, we should be doing.
But, and, you know, you've got it there two months, I remember what my question was, and this is before you go, and this has to do with probably the lead-in to where you're going.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, to make it successful, and to do the things to get it to pass the first time. Do you see a complication with, I understand people's feelings are people's feelings, but if everybody in this room, with the exception of the non-residents, including myself or discluding myself, having that on it, do you see an issue with all of them trying to be on the charter commission? Image-wise, now I'm saying image-wise, like what other people.
That's for you folks to decide.
Okay.
I, 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 let me, I'll jump segue into mine now.
Correct, but I'm saying if there's only, is there, is there a thought that, okay, you guys did this?
No.
To, you know what I, I mean, am I saying it the way I'm saying it, and it's not because I feel that way? Do we think residents feel that way?
Do you think there's a conflict of interest?
There's not a conflict of interest, hey, number one, not, not, there's not ethical interest or a conflict of interest in this case. He can opine on that some more, but you're allowed to, you're all allowed to run, so, and several, several council members did the last time.
I don't think you want that.
Yeah, my opinion on it is pretty simple, they convinced me in the charter on the Saturday, uh, council meeting we had, or, I'm sorry, work session. Um, I'm all in, um, and it does not bother me. So, like, on a personal level, it's like, if it, if the charter makes sense for the community, and after researching a little bit, I have no issues whatsoever, honestly, I'm, not to directly answer your question, but.
I, I think that's.
From my opinion.
I mean, to me, I think that, I mean, let's let you get into this, I'm for it, I wasn't for the last one, the way that there were certain things worth it.
Yeah, I'd like to hear this.
And in my mind, I feel like the simpler the better, but I'm not on the charter commission.
Well, there was, like I said, Stacy brought up some points, I remember that, I, I, I wanna say everybody kinda brought, I didn't know anything about it, honestly, other than what I had heard.
And that's the key.
And I don't wanna hear this.
Again, I think what failed the last time, you can go into this, I think education was probably the biggest part of it.
Don't disagree, and actually, the people you.
I do remember having to vote for it, and I was like, I don't know what this is.
Yeah.
Well, it seemed.
I remember getting a little book with it or something like that, with all in it, but I was like, I'm not reading this thing.
I, Jason, we're probably in the same boat, eh, eh, there, there was something about it that felt, and maybe that's what you're hitting at, Tiffany, is, it was, felt a little selfish too, um, but you can go into that.
Yeah. All right.
All right.
Here's your history, so, citizen-led initiative made it on the ballot, it was not done by council at the time, it was a citizen-led initiative. Uh, for the November sixth election in twenty eighteen, shall a commission be chosen to frame a charter, was the question. Voters said yes, and elected members at that time to the Menover Park Charter Commission as per what Jesse already went over. This commission did get to work right away, uh, which was interesting, um, I don't know if they were officially able to do that before January first of the year, but they got together, you know, they had meetings, which, you know, the public is allowed to have meetings, so I think they framed it in that direction, so they could start talking about it, and took advantage of their time right from the get-go.
Okay.
Um, council then authorized an independent council to support the work of the charter commission in January of twenty nineteen. That's Bricker and Eckler, LLP, was done.
Do we have record of that somewhere?
We sure do.
Yeah, I would like to read all of it.
Yeah, there's, there's, yeah, good times on the record, I, I'll touch base on a little bit of this.
I would agree, Russian land, I can.
So, there was, there's some amusing emails between, uh, one, Tony Benedetti and, um, our chief legal at the time.
My god.
Chief Hollins.
Chief Hollins.
Give it, give it to me, I want it.
Yeah, Tony, Tony was the, and council, I think, at the time, my opinion of watching all of this, was that they wanted to throw Tony a bone, and, you know, some of them, some of them were just tired, you know, and so, so they, they did this to the cost of thirty thousand dollars to the village. And so, we'll get some more here, the commission continued to work through twenty nineteen, ultimately presented the charter to the council, which voted in July to put the question on November fifth ballot. Shall proposed charters reported by the charter commission of the village of Menover Park be adopted? So.
Are these charter meetings public meetings?
Fails spectacularly.
Yeah, so they were reported, oh?
Yeah, I assume, give it, I want it.
The charter commissions were very, generally, I attended a lot of them, they were generally very professional, they generally, people were talking about it, and you had many voices. Um, but as I point here, the charter, I don't know why I didn't continue to copy over my thing, I was copying your thing, and stopping to do it all, anyway, different type. Charter failed spectacularly, seventy-seven to twenty-three percent, and there was a number of issues there, as Jason pointed out, education was one of them, but it was not the only thing. The observations at the time of charter was too complicated, multiple residents of the commission had competing agendas, that was a big thing, by the way. There were, there were people that joined just so they could keep an eye on their, on their neighbor and make sure things didn't get out of control, and there was, there were several competing agendas at the time, and it was interesting, they behaved themselves in the meeting, but there were clear, there were clear guidances to these particular groups that were in the, in the commission. Um, outside council was a giant mistake, in my view, uh, they blew through their thirty thousand dollar budget well before the end, and left the commission without clear legal guidance, when they needed it the most, the final drafts and final meeting before council, it was a hot mess, so.
I don't think I could disagree with any of that.
Hot mess, got it.
Right, so. My recommendations, so, charters are hard to pass, okay? Here are staff's recommendations for this go-round, keep it simple, easier for the voters to understand, and keeps the online trolls at bay, which was.
What do you mean by online trolls?
Oh, I know some.
You know what I mean.
I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I know a lot.
Guys, you're so boring.
Yeah, in all, in, in all, there's, there's more to this, but there, but there's a big problem of fake news and falsities, and, and, a part of the problem with a complicated charter, trying to address everything at once, it's easy to fear monger, it's easy to make it up, and people are not gonna read the book, right? My view is that if you adopt your existing codified ordinance, your existing charter, almost, as your charter, almost in its entirety, with just a few changes, a few key changes, it's much easier to explain to the voters, i.e., I'm going to set up a council maybe of seven members, I'm going to eliminate the mayor's position as an elected position, we're going to elect it amongst ourselves, and that eliminates some future loony from getting elected to, to mayor, which can, which can totally, as we know, sink the village in one fell swoop. And it allows council to have complete control, has the council complete control of staff, where you'd have to have four votes, that way there wouldn't be any shenanigans, eh, eh, you know, it's a much better way to handle that issue.
Why, why are charters hard to pass?
Well, because again, it's, it's complicated, it's complicated, and it's, it's hard, Obeds took three times to pass, there's, as an example, it, it's hard to do, right? It, it just, people like what they like and what they understand, so you take all of that, take, take all the complication away, make it what you have, what they know. That's my recommendation on this, I think, for those of us that served through this time, it, it's the complication that leads to the fear, and ooh, I don't want that, because they were talking administrator, and they were going through all the things, and people, they want that, it's much easier to take smaller bites of the apple with the amendments down the road. You, you focus on a singular item, hey, you wanna do an administrator, fine, you set up, you set up the charter commission review people, you know, you, 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 you know, which is a committee in-house, you go through it, it's public, you focus on one issue at a time, you put it to the voters to adopt. Each time, all the other charter communities do this to some degree, where they've got small bites of the apple that are easy to explain and focused issues, not ginormous, complicated charter, L wants to address everything, that's not gonna pass, in my view. Um, not till you get a lot of stakeholders behind it, and that's a long, that's why it takes a while. I think you can do this, this is a fairly straight, my opinion, fairly straightforward thing, learn, you know, what we did back in the day that didn't work, you can do it. And again, I just point out, the changes that the voters will understand is changes to council, they'll understand they don't wanna, uh, uh, you know, a possibility of some crazy happening with their village, people like their village the way it is. So, you can easily explain why you would change councils, make up why you would eliminate the mayor's as elected position, and people are still electing the council members, so it's a good thing. P and Z, we, we, we know we need to make a few changes of P and Z, that's an easy one, Pete, that's a little inside baseball, but you can do that, in my view, from the get-go, people don't care. Bidding limits and requirements, easy to explain, benefits the village, so there you go, you can add one or two more, but I keep it small, it's on, on recommending it this.
I think those things, and also perhaps, and I don't wanna call out, but like, you bringing examples, specific, hey, in twenty twenty-five, we have this, and if we would have X, Y, and Z.
If we were charter, yeah.
And, and being able to bring that to Joe Smith on Ponderosa.
Right. Right.
And, and, I, I mean, honestly, I think we need to have sessions here, if possible, somehow, some way. To go, hey, we're thinking about a charter, let us know what you think, we'll tell you what our, our thoughts are. And really, it's like, uh, I don't know, it's, it's like a marketing campaign, but you have to have the same
Yep.
Language and the same ideas, and we all have to have the same talking points to make sure that we're consistent in our.
Council wasn't on board, is what you have to remember. Council was not on board with this charter. It was right after the two nine 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 building, there was a lot of mistrust, there was a lot of agree, disagree, don't, whatever, we don't have that climate right now.
No.
But you're always gonna have this one thing that you guys already know. You're always gonna have that one, I don't know, pointing finger, so I'm just gonna say, that one person that no matter what you do, you will not do enough, and you are wrong.
Seven years have gone by since that time.
Yes.
And much has been learned, and the, the, the demographics have changed rather significantly in the village in those seven years. And you have, you know, eight hundred more residents, and people want a well-run village. Um, as I point out here, number three is, the entire councils we touched on should run and be on the commission. You should be seven members with the mayor on that commission. There are other folks who were former council members, who should be a part of it, so you can get to your fifteen. Yes, you're gonna have, definitively, you're gonna have a few, a few voices out there who are gonna try to run opposition. But, look, the public knows who those people are, and who pays their taxes and doesn't pay their taxes, as an example, and they're not gonna get a majority of votes, right? And so, yeah, there might be twenty people running, but they're gonna see names they trust, and you can, you can work hard to, you know, get, get people to vote for it.
But there's no write-in, you have to be on time to get on the ballot. Yeah, there's not.
Right, but, but that's right, but all people, like I said, have a, have a good, have a couple, have a couple, have a couple, have a couple, honestly, have a couple party, get together.
I thought you were doing the jokes.
And it works both ways, so.
That was a good one.
It was good.
It's really good.
Uh.
So.
Agreed.
And then the final one is just, no need for outside council this time, I think that's a, a, understandable, they, they're capable, they're going to charge you much less over time. And they're just gonna charge something.
Yeah, Joe will be here, he did it for now.
Oh, yeah, is he an intern? So, I mean.
Well, no.
Again, do we get another guy that's an intern?
And quite frankly, there are other resources to help you. Uh, we did have Rod Davidson come up from OBAS to speak to charter commission. He is more than happy to come up, he'll bring Gene with him this time too, they actually do this for other municipalities, they go and help other municipalities get charters adopted. So they're very knowledgeable, and will be happy to come do the show on the road and come up to Menover Park.
And again, it was just the trust issue and all of that kinda stuff, it does not make sense to not use your own council that knows where your downfalls are.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's very bizarre, I mean, it was because Tony didn't like Gene.
Yeah.
That was pretty much something else.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right there in the emails, I'm just.
Right, we, I got the whole.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta, but like, thank you for summarizing that. My question is, how many uncharted villages are there in Ohio? Like, three, right?
There's a few still.
There.
But.
But like.
It, it, yeah, mo- most places have a charter.
Yeah, so that's like where this conversation was, like where people were like, charters are bad, and then I, like, looked it up, and it was like, most people have a charter because they're staying in.
Yeah, I don't mean that. No.
If you aren't, um, if, if you aren't trying to push an agenda based on I, I don't know how the nice way to say it, but.
I remember asking people online, and I know it's the online, but I'm not, if you guys know me, I'm just like, hey, tell me the why behind this, what is this going to do?
No, wouldn't you?
And the people that would speak up didn't really have a good why.
Yeah.
And if we can present that, and I don't wanna say manufactured, but clearly articulated, I think that we have a much better chance.
Actually, the answer is protect the village.
Right.
Yeah, that, that is the answer, it's, it's, to, to, to prescribe our own, the, the, the rules by which we are governed, and have our own say in it.
Right.
Yeah.
The statehouse forcing it down your throat.
One, one quick question, if you don't mind, this is for me, 'cause fifteen people on the commission.
Right, correct.
It's a lot, right?
Right, it is.
Not everybody shows up to every single meeting, just like why?
That's right.
It's, each person is paid?
No.
No.
Free.
We can provide, we can provide donuts or beer, sure.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, forgive me. Got it, I, I, it says establishing formulas for elected officials.
Oh, yeah, 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 elected, yeah, for like council, mayor.
Council, forgive me, I, that's what I, so.
No, we can't afford.
Right, right, I'm. I was like, how are you gonna sell that one? I mean, right?
So, guys, what am I at?
Okay, I'm into it.
Do we want to get the legislation put together to start with the readings?
Yeah.
For the resolution?
I assume all we have to do is go to the old one to change the dates.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Potentially.
Nothing changing, yeah.
Get an intern to do that, cheaper for us, thanks Jesse.
So, you know, again, this is a, this is a meeting that we take a vote on, or just kind of a, in general, anyone?
I'll get it ready.
Do you not want to pursue this?
No.
No.
Does anybody have any other questions, concerns, does anybody have concerns about this? Well, I think at the end of the day, all you're doing is putting it on the ballot, you're not making any decisions, the residents are gonna make the decision. So, all you're doing is giving the village the opportunity to make their say.
With the commission's guidance.
I, I, we're serving fifteen people, I check even if they're making that thing again.
But that's why you're trying, fine, then the residents are gonna vote no again, and you're gonna waste a lot of time and money.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there, so is that, is that a big concern? Like, literally, like, is.
I think everybody I've talked to, but we're all the nosy people, but everybody's pro charter right now.
I mean, we know who's engaged, right?
I know everything about everybody.
Saying like, we can, we can reach out to people and.
Do you want to reach out to people?
But also, a little bit to everybody, but.
And get your, and, and, and honestly, after the meeting, get yourselves together on a couple of occasions. Decide on who your additional stakeholders need to be, who need to be the other members who are supportive of the position.
Yeah.
And get people to, again, have your party, and have everybody sign, I mean, fifteen people at the party, you all sign each other's thing, and you can be on the.
Why would I all do that? I mean, you guys could have like a.
Well, I'm just saying, you only need ten names on your thing, if you've got fifteen there, you've got your five extra, and all of you sign each other, so you're good, you're good.
Just to make it a clean swim.
You know, we, we move forward or whatever, wouldn't it be a great idea at this time to have like a pamphlet ready, so we can start handing out to residents, to let them kinda be aware of the pros and cons, or?
Sure, protect the village, pass the charter, there you go.
I don't think there's anything wrong with some information, you know, kinda take this and bundle it into a nice little, yes.
Postcard. Here's the thing, like, I'm just gonna keep it real here, I still don't quite one thousand percent understand the charter and the pros and cons yet, even though we just talked about it.
Do you know what home rule is? Jesse, what's home rule?
It is.
To the Ohio Constitution.
Yes. Nineteen twelve, Ohio Constitution passed it, it's to shrink the sphere of the state's influence on your local body politic, so it's, it's your right to govern yourself as you wish to be. And so that's the charter, it's getting away from the formula of the state law.
So currently, we have to follow state law. Because we don't have local law. A charter would establish local law that would supersede state law in some ways.
I guess what I'm trying to say is like, that's, we should have that pamphlet, so people understand that.
Right, yeah.
Right, so.
But it has to be in a way that.
There's nothing.
Understand, right?
Right.
Yep, we have to.
That's where the administration.
Yes.
Here's where we have to be as council. Um, as we work this resolution, after we pass it, and before that election. We have to be the team that informs the village of why we're doing this.
Right, yeah.
We're the cheerleaders behind this.
Yeah.
So we have to provide them information where they feel like they understand the, you know, why, why this is important, why they wanna do this. Why as council we're acting this. We have to, we have to have, um, meet, I don't wanna say meetings. Um, uh, like events, or, or, yeah, we have the whole assemblies where we're going through all this.
Have one at the pool.
Probably not before May, before election, but.
Oh.
No, I'm saying, like, before the November.
But May is just a.
May is the election.
Wait, if you get it all written before the end of July, because it has to be on the ballot in November, you can start like, again, trying to get it.
Yeah, there's two parts to this, one is the, we gotta get people to vote for it, so they have to understand why, they have to understand who the people are we want. You know, why should they vote for these people? It's probably like another candidate's night, in a way.
Absolutely.
Where you bring the, whoever it is, and you say, we, people ask questions, why do you wanna serve on this committee? And, um, you know, go through the whole thing. There's a lot of work in order to get this to pass and be successful, there's a lot of pre-work we're gonna have to do between May and May.
So we have Saturday mornings.
So, I just, I, I just wanna make sure everyone's on board with this. Because it's not just us passing paper and voting on it, it's gonna involve a little bit more.
Yeah.
Well, a lot more.
Okay, a lot more.
Yeah, your first one, you're, quite frankly, your first question, should the village adopt the charter and the fifteen members, is not that difficult, right? It, it passed the first time, generally, generally, they're gonna say, hey, folks understood that the first go-around, that one's not hard. It's, once they've got the, you know, where the rubber meets the road, and the products in front of them, that's where you need your pamphlet, that's where you need your, that's where really your hard work's gonna come in, convince them.
It is.
In my opinion, you were very high level last too, it didn't pass and that sort of thing, but what really, I'm just gonna say this.
Did you want some detail?
Yeah, well, no, what I want is what were the sudden twist of, of naysayers who were originally pro it?
They were.
They weren't.
The, the council people were, because I was on council at the time.
This was a citizen-driven initiative, because there were, there were people that wanted a charter, and the council was telling them to buzz off. And so, uh, Brian Wolf, led by Brian Wolf amongst others, he brought it and said, hey, we should have a charter, this is stupid, right? And.
And people just didn't have the trust.
And there was, you know, then you had different groups getting elected to the commission who had different opinions about, some were very pro.
Too much, it was a pod, pod, of.
That, that, and then, and then they introduced, you know, and again, it's the first go-round. They, they, again, the sessions were professional, and people discussed a lot, and they tried to put everything, I mean, there were people like, uh, Dick Busek and Brian Wolf agreeing on things and putting things together in a larger document, and it was a good, I think, overall, my opinion was, the commission worked hard at the end of the day to put a product that they felt good behind, right? But it was complicated, it had certain aspects of it that the London people were tearing apart. The online trolls did not like the administrative, they didn't like it, the budget wasn't decided, they didn't understand this stuff, they didn't wanna be obligated to certain things.
At the time, people weren't against even having an administrator. You have to understand that at that point, seven years ago, people didn't want an administrator.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not saying it was right or wrong, but you did have council support at all.
Then the problem at the last minute, the last minute, when there was no more legal counsel, certain questions came up in the final document draft. People were running in here at the last meeting, there was, you know, because, and there was no legal counsel to assist, and it was kinda ugly, right at the end.
There was, there was one thing that was in there, and Eric, I don't know if you're gonna remember this, but this was one of the biggest pushes was the way it was written, they could've bought two nine 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 and not had any problems, and that was one of the things that they were like. But they made it more difficult for sewer projects, that you had to have X amount of reading, they did something that was just, yeah, they made it.
There were some complications, there were some complications with advertising, about timings, and, and that's the problem, they, they, there was some confusion.
Yes.
All of that was in the charter.
There was some confusion of, yeah, there was some confusion on the, uh.
Oh, there was specific, it was very detailed.
And, and that's where the legal counsel on some of this came in, because there was, there was questions the council had, the folks couldn't answer, they wouldn't have a legal counsel to assist them at that moment. It got, and that's where it got a little ugly and complicated.
And then everybody said whatever they wanted to say.
Yeah, it was a little.
It was, no, it was.
Honestly, it was probably the right decision to not pass that, since it's a hot mess, sandwich.
Right. It became a hot mess.
Yeah. Um, we're going for vanilla, and we're going for basic, and my suggestion is that like from today forward, anything you do, if there's like, oh, if we can do this differently, maybe write it down as we're doing it for the charter. So like emergencies, absolutely, if there's anything else, but also, I don't want it to be that detailed, because we're gonna, no offense, everybody, but the more detailed you do it, the more.
You're not looking into the future, you're gonna screw up.
We're gonna, information gathering, Mark, you can be as detailed as you want.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, 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 but we're gonna cut that, but yeah, but it's just, keep it basic, keep it general, I think, and.
Like he said, change, adjust the five things that you know means adjusted, and move forward, and then do some, some additional things as the years go on.
Yeah.
You change the things that you know is currently a problem, the bids limits and that kinda stuff are a problem, because, number one, we have to put all this RFP and out to bid and do this, and then it takes us three months to do a project, and it, it's just, instead of just being able to pick up the phone and call three people and get a price, you can't do that.
Quite frankly, we'll be able to pull, I know some of that was in the original charter work, we'll be able to pull some, and just take that piece out, make some adjustments.
Oh, yeah.
And honestly, I think we can meet your timelines, May to November, if you get everybody on the, the charter elected, that's key, who's, again, of like mind, you know. We can utilize what we've already learned, what we already have produced, it's not gonna be rocket science to put it together for you. And then you're off to the races, I think you can make your November deadline this.
Do you think Jesse would want to ask some people that served on the last charter commission?
Absolutely, I think.
To give us some historic background.
I think it's useful for you to have those conversations, I think there's certain people who will be supportive of what you're doing, who will gladly re-serve again.
Yeah.
And, and, and that's the opportunity for you to have those conversations.
It was a lot of work, and a lot of those people didn't work really hard on it, it's just they didn't have the support, and there was just too many, too much change. Too much change, too fast.
I guess my last thing is, at some point, I think there was a citizen-led initiative that didn't make it to the ballot because of our lack of power rule. I don't know, it was like a.
What's this?
This one. And so, the Board of Elections, there was like a ruling, and it was controversial, that because there was no. And because of that, I would like to also know if there's anything we could do going forward to make sure that that doesn't happen, because it really felt like
It's a.
A strict constitution.
It's a, it's over my head, guys, what are we talking about? That's a ruling, yeah, so that's a ruling. If we're, are we allowed to talk?
Trying to target, I, I, yeah.
Are we allowed to talk about it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
But I, but I, but that's one of those things, that's, that's one of the things that the Board of Elections rules on certain things, and they have their own, they have their own attorney involved in there. And so, we, even with our own charter, we can't necessarily overrule the Board of Elections.
I think the point was.
Right, that was the, that was the problem, they were saying that there was a general statewide law, that even if we had our own charter, we couldn't preempt, but that.
No, that's right.
But you're, you're, you're raising a good point, we should address, to the extent that that doesn't apply, yes, yeah, I agree.
That. We can't. Yes, I would really address that, because that felt really wrong.
Yeah.
Correct. So, some legislation.
I'll grab it, yeah.
Get it up, perfect.
That part's easy.
So I put it on the ballot, or do you want me to see, because we should have it already.
Yeah, yeah, if you had, if you have it, flip it to me, I'll.
We'll flip it to you tomorrow, I'll see if I can get Mark to flip it to you, if not, we'll figure it out, but I'm assuming we have the one from last year?
Yeah.
Or not last year, but September or something.
I wanna see the reference.
It probably isn't mine.
Is there a way for, I don't wanna give.
Do we have the old char, did you guys get the old charter email to you that, because I know it was like a related file?
No, I, I do.
We, we have the copy somewhere, I mean, here, I have a copy.
No, I found, Barb sent it to you guys all that morning.
I don't, I don't think I got a giant file. Yeah, charter, charter commission process, I got it on ten thirty.
No, this would've been before that, after the last meeting, Mark is gonna try to send it to you guys from the legislation, and it might not, it just might've been too big of a file to send.
I think it's too, but I would like to, I don't know if there's a way to.
Yes, I'm sorry, this is.
Is there a way to have access on the website through like a password or something, for me to just freely peruse and stuff?
It, I don't know if the attachment is attached to the legislation, but yes, if, if the attachment is on there, you should be able to see it.
I just am trying to do some research about what potential problems could be brought up in conversation.
If you can find.
To re-up those points ahead of time.
If you can find the old flyers, okay, if you can find the old flyers of what people were fighting, that would be what you would wanna find, but I don't know if anybody has those.
Cause I wanna see what the points were, and have the counterpoint to that, I'm just playing chess here.
We, we did get the previous charter, it's the ten three email.
Okay.
It is the ten three.
The ten three email.
Oh, that's because we're November three, just so you know, I've been signing everything twenty twenty-six, so don't worry about it.
But if you're in twenty twenty-three, I do that.
Ten, so.
Ten three makes sense, because I've been here for our last work session.
Yeah.
So, um, okay, we good on this?
I think so, yeah.
We do need to.
Here, we're in the mood for fun, just go to Facebook and search charter.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and we'll start with that, I'm just, I'm just ready to.
Oh, it's horrible. And I would advise you not to.
I think I'm ready.
So, um.
Do you need Jesse too?
I think for, at least one thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I need you, please help me.
Or maybe two, then. Uh, let's go through the legislation, is that okay? Because I think there are two things in here that we need to discuss a little further. One is gonna be, um, the wage and salary, I think we wanna talk a little bit about. And then the other one here is, um, the rules of council, we need to, if we wanna make any edits with the rules of council. Cause we're on a second reading, and we won't have another reading, we won't have another work session before our final reading. So if we wanna make any changes to that, we wanna discuss that tonight. So I think those are the two big things in here.
Okay.
So let's start, uh, let's start from the tax ordinance, twenty-five dash nineteen, which is the ordinance updating the wage and salary range as the number of employees and positions for the coverage of Menover Park. Uh, it will be a second reading, uh, and this, with the third reading, it'll pass before Thanksgiving, so keep that in mind. I know a couple of you have talked, have mentioned, well, let, let's just open it up for discussion. Let's just start there.
Wages and salaries.
Twenty-five nineteen, which is the wages and salaries. Twenty five nineteen, which is the wages and salaries. Yep. Um, I, I mean, I, I'll just jump in here, uh, and kind of tell you all what has been wrong to me. Um, I don't think there's any issues unless someone has not sent in to me about the actual, uh, changes to the pay ranges. I think the question came, has come up to the quantity of officers, um, in here, so, uh, specifically where it says the police department is authorized to have ten full-time and two part-time positions allocated. Uh, between position levels at the discretion of the chief of police, uh, there shall be no more than two sergeants and one lieutenant, uh, I think those are the two sentences that, um, some of council wants to discuss, so.
Um, so, yeah, um, just as you said, uh, the police department is authorized to have eight full, or ten full-time and two part-time positions allocated between the position levels at the discretion of the police, uh, chief. Um, there shall be no more than two sergeants and one lieutenant, I thought we could change the verbiage to something along the lines of, the police department is authorized to have eight to ten full-time positions, there shall be no more than one sergeant and one lieutenant. And leaving at that, or perhaps any additional will be up to council.
I would love to have the chief's input on this, to be honest.
Yes.
I just don't know if we're gonna make that special help, talking to the police.
Well.
I'm gonna, when you, go ahead.
I do wanna, I, listen, um, I have been doing some research, I have a presentation, but I didn't wanna bring it today. Um, and Tiffany, I really wanted to sit down with you separately, honestly, first, and then I was gonna talk to chief too. Um, my concern is, and, and please know, this is a, hopefully a cordial conversation, I really hope so, because I don't want it to be an attack on the police, and this is why I wanna talk to you first, Tiffany, so sorry, really sorry. The, um, the reality is, is that there's a lot of characteristics in regards to the police forces, urban versus rural, all that fun stuff, it's in a presentation right here, guys. And one of my main concerns was, it posted on October fourteenth, it, it, it hit me when we did the finance meeting, our expenses are high for the police, and I know we don't wanna talk like that. When we passed Rita in sixteen, seventeen, whenever it was, there was talk of an increase in those officers and stuff like that, I'm all about that. I do wanna tell you a personal story, somebody broke in my house seven years ago, Tiffany might remember this, but I know others know, and they had broken into three houses, mine was the third house, and it was a, whatever. So, there were five dis- divisions that came here during that night, they were searching for the guy, he ended up hiding in my house. So about three thirty in the morning, Minerva Park, I remember the officer, I remember his face, I don't remember his name, sorry, and he was going around the neighborhood, so it's very important for us to have a police force here, don't get that twisted. And he saw the guy, you know, trashed my SUV, and he hit the hazard lights, my, you guys know where my, most of you guys know where my house is, my part, my parking area is in the back, the hazard lights are going off, he's circling around, three thirty in the morning, obviously an issue. They had been looking for the guy for two hours. He slammed him in my kitchen, my son left the door, back door open, because he came from the Friday night football game, he was afraid he was gonna get locked out, whatever, twelve-year-old, right? Anyway, never woke up so bad in my life, and the police officer had him tackled in my, in my dining room, I say that because it's very important, but then again, those five divisions showed up again, departments, I give them, Mifflin, Blendon, Clinton, Columbus, Minerva Park. So it's very important, I wanted to say that though, because we're at a different stage, and I don't like to, and I really want, chief, I, I, a hundred percent, maybe we're, yeah, we agree. The, I have some stats, do you guys mind for a second? So nationwide average per thousand residents is two point four officers, okay? Per thousand, per thousand residents, we have two thousand, urban areas is two point eight, rural is three point three, keep that in perspective, Minerva Park is at five per thousand, Blendon is one point five, this is all on Wikipedia. Uh, there's a police, uh, website too that I have, can't see it on here, but it's there, um, Columbus is, Blendon is one point five, Columbus is two point five, Westerville's two point two. Square mileage, we're at point five two square miles, Blendon is six point eight, that's a lot, Columbus is twenty, two hundred twenty-three square miles, Westerville's twelve point six one, okay? Those are just basic stats, I have some other stats behind it, and what I wanna propose, I, it, I didn't, I, I don't care, I wanna state this too, I don't care about the management or the. Um, how things are ran, that performance, that is not what we're talking about here, for me personally, it's not what we're talking about, what we're talking about is budget-wise, you saw the red numbers, and this was not meant for tonight, guys, but sorry. The red numbers up there, I've talked to Jeff a number of times, and the, 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 the reality is, we can get out of that red number just as simply as right sizing the staff, now, I will never vote for a cut of people. Okay, straight up, cut of people, I will never, I, say it on record, but we do need to look at what we would call in corporate world attrition, or a hiring freeze. Um, I, I'm not saying we should do it, I just want it to be out there, because I'm, I just think that there's things that have changed with, um, and things that may change with our taxing. Thank you for the time, that wasn't a presentation necessarily that I wanted to give today.
So, so first I wanna say, to, to, to council as a whole, right, don't apologize for us asking the questions, that's our job, we, we need to ask the questions, and nothing should be off the table, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it's healthy, it's better for us to ask the questions than to ignore them.
Right, I'd rather know the answer, because now that doesn't work, I didn't even think about this.
So, we also, we also are up against a timetable, so unfortunately, we have two readings and no other reading, each one now and then, and where the, the timing is probably not the best.
Yes, yeah. It's not, and.
It, it is what it is, and we can't do anything about it.
Yeah, but, I did ask Jeff even tonight, and I'm, again, his suggestion, cause I was like, well, wait a minute, like, let's, maybe a little bit more lo- longer term of a plan, right? Whereas you, you know, if, there's been turnover, I don't know it as well as others, and you don't, you know, and, and unfortunately, if chief hears this, I'm sorry, but you don't rehire those positions necessarily, and you gotta figure out scheduling. Again, I'm not talking about performance and management, I will never, especially a department, police department, sorry, I can't, I can't speak to that, I really can't, I have managed a lot of people in my life. But the, with that being said, I get it, it's a tough conversation, it's people's safety, these numbers do show a different story, we are surrounded by districts, departments, that would, on a. When somebody breaks in somebody's house, they're showing up, from what I've read, okay? But that's only what I've read, and I've experienced it, so there's that, but I just think that, I, healthy, I, I think it's, we need to discuss it in terms of, I am a little bit more, I wouldn't say doomsday, but definitely a little bit more like, we gotta be careful with our budget. I, I love the idea of new revenue, but I, I, I also think that those are the other side of it, and I just think, and I apologize, guys, I just.
No, I, I think it's great, and I think you have something to say, you have something to say, I would like everybody to go around the room, because I, I do have a little bit of in, just insight to a couple of things that I just want to, everybody to leave out of here with today. Um, to explain a cou- like scheduled, like that, but I want you to go next, cause I'm, I'm making notes for, cause I have some of these answers that chief is going to answer, I'm not saying I.
And I hope we didn't put, I don't, and I didn't wanna put him on the spot.
I agree with Jason a hundred percent, if you don't ask questions you don't know, and you do not apologize for wanting to make sure that you're doing the best things for the.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I wanted to do it a certain way, this did not happen with, but that's okay.
It's okay. But I also think you need to realize that if you don't ask these questions, then you're not doing your job.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanna say a couple of things, one, I agree with, like, you know, don't wanna fire anybody, anything like that, but this, but, keep in mind, this ordinance has maintenance staff, maintenance workers, administration, this is a big thing, this is not just that.
Yeah.
But going, you know, kinda off of what you just said, so-called hiring freeze, why would we put more people unemployment if we're thinking about budgeting? You know what I mean, and, and we are under a time constraint, and again, I'm not, I, I would, you know, I, I support the police one thousand percent, um, it's just taking out the two-part-time and taking out a sergeant, we don't even, we only have one sergeant, why add an additional sergeant? You know, right?
I'm not.
Why add two?
I think we've talked about that reason in the past, uh, but go ahead, keep, keep going with your point.
Uh, I just lost my shit, I thought, Kathy, sorry.
So, for me, it comes down to economics, I feel as though we are, um, probably in a more challenging economy right now, but it's going to become more and more challenging over time. And, and the thought of adding even two part-time people with the potential of decrease, it come from the income tax, and that's where I think, so to add that, to potentially put ourselves in a situation where we're just gonna have to possibly let them go. And, and whether it's a year or two from now, that doesn't matter, I don't think we should hire people with the thought of, oh, we can let them go, so I'm extremely uncomfortable from, uh, everything that's going on nationally, and that may affect us in terms of, um, economics and that sort of thing. I'm very uncomfortable with the thought of adding even two part-time people, and I'm a little surprised, I have never introduced legislation, um, but I'm very uncomfortable with the fact that the, the, uh, salary increases were tied to this increase in, in personnel. And I don't wanna vote for the increase in personnel, as you, that means I'm saying no salary increases, and that makes me very uncomfortable with the legislation in general.
I don't think there's a change to personnel, I think that's been the same as it's been in the past.
It's the same, it has been the same, so.
Then why is, I'm sorry, then why is it injured, if we already have two, you know, we have ten and two part-time.
This was. This is just, this has been in here every year, and really what we're voting on is this top part?
Because we've never hired them. Yes and no, so the question is, if it's listed in there, they can do it, so what you're, you're questioning, so I think you're all hitting the right point, I believe the legislation hasn't changed, but no one has to come to you.
Yes, yes.
If they decide, if, the way that it reads right now, if they wanna hire two part-time people, they can do it.
Yeah, and a sergeant.
And, and a sergeant. Makes them a sergeant, so that's what, that is the conversation, it's not changed, but no one has taken out, if they don't want it, if, they have the ability to do it, they haven't done it, no one's saying that they're doing it, but if they want to do it tomorrow, they can do it.
Right.
Yes. Yes. But I also do not believe, and if anybody can answer this question, go for it, but I think I know the answer, I do not know that a sergeant or the two part-timers is technically budgeted in those numbers.
That, that's my answer.
Yes, so.
So not only that, it's not even budgeted, but maybe one is.
So, okay, so basically, and, and I'm just gonna be flat out and say this, as of right now, our chief can hire another, uh, appoint, any sergeant, can hire two more people, increasing our budget, right?
Without any oversight, because we've allowed him to do that, I, this is why I wanna correct that, that we only, this is a small, small neighborhood, we do not need two sergeants, with all due respect to the chief, we only have one right now, why hire another one, or, you know, appoint another one? And why hire two more part-time people when we have ten, that's a, that's a lot for this size, and going back to what.
There's that, but more importantly, why is the most expensive department in this entire village allowed to hire people and adversely affect our budget? Where'd that come from?
Because you guys are allowing it, it's, and I'm not, I'm not, but I'm saying that's what it's been.
It's been.
I'm trying to correct that right now.
Yeah, so, and.
This conversation really should happen.
I, well, that's okay, I, can I say a thing?
Yes, please, please.
No, I mean, I, I agree financially speaking, when you look at those red numbers, and if it was two less, and you think a hundred and thirty, like two hundred and sixty thousand dollars compounds, over three years, that's three quarters of a million dollars. So I, that's what I start to think about, because that is, um, another Minerva Lake Road section completed, perhaps, or at least half of it, and the other half of ground, who knows? But don't, and I could be wrong, but while this, we're setting the credit limit, it's not spending the money.
Right.
It's setting the limit that they can do, officers, new officers to us are still voted on, so while they could attempt to hire one, we as council still have the yay-nay as a probationary officer.
It's true.
Just because they hire them, we can still say no, and it could be on a matter of budgetary concern.
But we've already spent quite a bit of money by the time it rolls around to you.
And that's fine, but if chief knows our position, then he wouldn't go through that process, so I, I'm, I'm just trying to say, this is the setting of the credit limit, it's not them spending the money, and we as council still have the ability to influence the people that we work alongside.
Right. Right, and I also, I just want, I completely agree with you, I also wanna give chief credit, where I feel like he's not gonna make those decisions without like, I don't know, checking the pulse of what we can afford, like, who would do that, like, you have to, I think this is.
The, 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 the track record, the track record shows a little differently for this community though, that's the problem I have with that part, so I look back in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, you know, we're looking at four or five officers per, you know? And so it's grown, it's doubled in that amount of time, and, yeah, I'm sorry.
Before you go further, let me explain the two thousand fifteen versus now, and I'm gonna do this quick and easy with just numbers. Typically, there are three per shift, sergeant, chief, or I'm sorry, lieutenant chief, and one other officer, because chief is not always in here, he has meetings, he has that, second shift, three officers, third shift, three officers. Just think about it this way, every single week, you're off two days, you're off two days, two, so there is ninety-nine percent of the time, there are only two officers on shift per week, okay? I don't, I'm not telling you names or anything, but right now, we have a person that's off and has been off for a medical leave, so now that shift is short, so every time someone takes a vacation, this shift is short. I will tell you in the last month, without going in detail, on a Saturday, we have been paying officers potentially overtime, or one officer working twelve hours on a Saturday, two different officers, because with nine officers, we are still short-staffed.
Story number two, um, thirty years ago, driving pass-through here to go to Columbus, several different things I've done, we stayed away from Minerva Park.
Yep.
When I first moved here thirteen years ago, I got pulled over three times for a stop sign.
Yep.
There were four or five officers, three officers, four, whatever, whatever that number was thirty years ago, whatever that number was, and, and this, this is why, I, I don't wanna talk about management, I don't wanna talk about performance management. That, that, that is not, it's something I can do, but I will not do, but what I will do is just try to address how many officers we have versus Blendon. I can't, I, I, I can't tell you, we know the news story about the Blendon officers and, at Kroger parking lot three years ago.
Yeah, I don't know.
But you gotta keep in mind, it's six time, ten times, sorry, the square mileage, it's one point six officers, one point five officers, per thousand, lot more space, right? Kroger is a lot more busier than anything we will see, uh, well, I guess that market's kinda, but you get the point, and so, yeah, I get it, it's a challenge, um, I faced it at work. We had firing freezes at Citibank, and it was not pretty, and honestly, we were understaffed, I, I think, I'm sorry, forgive me, Jesse. But I just, I just, I, I just, again, just wanna have an open conversation, I cannot speak to the other stuff, I can't, the scheduling, I can't speak to.
And I think that's the biggest part, that I just want to make sure that you guys understand the way that it is, three, three, and three, you never have more than two officers on a shift, and right now, there are most days with one on vacation and one on sick leave, you only have one officer. Like if I, if you go outside right now, there is one officer on duty, and he's been on duty from two to ten, and that's with nine officers, so tomorrow morning, you will have two, tomorrow afternoon, you will maybe have one, and then tomorrow night, you will have two, but tonight, you only have one. So I'm, I'm just trying to point out, if you.
But what, what would that look like ten years ago, though?
You didn't have, that's just it, you didn't have it, we only had part-timers, and so here's a great example about Mifflin, and I'm not, I, I just wanna make sure you guys see this, Mifflin is not a twenty-four hour.
I know.
They, they aren't twenty-four hours, so that's what, if you cut two officers, you will not have twenty-four hour service seven days a week, it's not gonna happen mathematically, it doesn't work.
Well, that's the same as what happens to Columbus response, or you just don't.
Columbus, Blendon, Mifflin, Franklin County Sheriff.
Right, and right now, Blendon's down three officers, so, it just passed, so hopefully they will get back, but Mifflin is not responding at night, they do not, we're responding to Mifflin, and everybody else is responding to, we are not responsible, no.
Do we get to pick them up?
Just like if we're short-staffed, when we were down three officers just a couple of months ago, they were helping us out, so I always make sure that, you know, I'm doing the chief part right now, but I also do agree that, um. And I will say, that is one of the things that we had talked about, so the big thing is, is if you have part-timers, which we got out of doing part-timers, because they were not as reliable, um, sometimes they left, sometimes they stayed because they wanted a full-time position, but part-timers are a ton cheaper because we don't pay their insurance. So, we got out of that because we just didn't, I believe it was because they just weren't as reliable, um, but financially, they make the most sense, so that was the conversation that Jeff and I were having, is.
Part-time, and you can flex them up and down, or should we do them?
And, and, yeah, so.
Yeah, I've had two part-time jobs, so.
Yeah, so, I'm not, again, I am not in disagreement with any of it, I am just.
It, it, it's just, I guess, guys, I, I won't go over the numbers again, I won't go over the, I mean, it's significantly more, let, let's throw that out there.
And it's because of the hours, I mean, if you want a twenty-four hour service, you will get a schedule, you will, and I, and maybe, like, and Jason has alluded to this, and I'm not getting into this right now, because Jason and I. The scheduling is something that he feels as if it's something we should be looking at.
Westerville, twenty-four hours, Blendon, I, I, I guess I'll say twenty-four hours, I can't speak to that.
Blendon is twenty-four hours, but there's many nights, there is, again, you have one person in Minerva Park, one person in Blendon, and one person in Clinton working.
One person in Minerva Park for point five. One person in Minerva Park for point five-two square miles versus one person in Blendon square, six point eight, I get it, but.
If you have a domestic. No, you have to understand, if you have a domestic, you cannot go in by yourself, so we have to wait for Blendon shows.
So you wait for. But they're gonna show.
Not if they're on, not if they're on a traffic accident or what.
Guys, honestly, that's why I didn't really wanna discuss this.
No, I think.
I, I, because I, I, I think that it's very, it's very driven, there's some fear, there's, we're urban, I get it. Um, but we, you know, Columbus city is really close, I see Blendon.
They're not even on our schedule, they're not even on our radio, just so you know, Columbus is not on our radio, is that accurate? We're on zone two and four and all that, Columbus has our channel.
No, but like Tony, here's the thing, there's like an algorithm where you look at it, it's like, it's, here, here's what I'm saying, I understand what you're saying.
I think it's tone drops in here.
But there's always like a per person way, but there's like a minimum X plus.
We're double.
But we're not double, we're just one person, you know what I mean?
You could say, what does it take to have one person per shift?
But if, but what, when someone call, if you don't have enough people and someone call, I am not in disagreement, I think that's the thing.
Who we? Stephanie, who, who, who do we call? What number does, where does it go?
Franklin County dispatches.
But that's the person that dispatches it.
They're going to.
They show up, if you are the one in a tragic situation, how fast do you want someone to show up? And again, if you have one officer and they're doing something, I mean, the thing is, I mean JP, you just had this situation the other day, you were waiting for an officer, but they were already on a call. So how long did you wait for one officer to show up? I, I, I don't know, I don't know the answer.
I wanna say like seven, eight minutes.
I think this is why, this is the part of the, the conversation where it would be much better to have the discussion with chief.
And I think that's why I'm trying to give some, here's what I'm telling you, these are the answers you're gonna get from chief. Is you, if you cut down, if you cut down these particular things, it enables no officer to be able to take a day off, and if they do, you're gonna pay overtime, so you're gonna hit that budget so much faster.
Right. I'm sorry, I feel like.
But there's like a, a minimum X plus, and we're not considering the X plus, right, you have to have a minimum of one person, and then the rest is gravy.
JP, go ahead.
Tony is kinda, forgive me here, you're kinda, we're not, this is not a performance thing, this is not taking away any officers or anything like that, all I'm trying to do is not hire any more and do not put a sergeant out there when we already have a sergeant, a chief and a lieutenant in a one by mile by one mile square radius neighborhood, that's all I'm saying, this, I don't think we need a police chief in here to tell us.
You're not wrong.
You know what I mean, like, I'm not saying, if this was like, I'm gonna cut some officers, yeah, get the chief in here, that's, that's not what I'm saying at all. I'm just saying, as of right now, the way this is reading, you're allowing the chief of police to hire two more people and bump up a sergeant at his free will, and we haven't even budgeted this stuff for, that's the problem to me.
And then if you don't.
It's a budget problem, this is not a staffing, oh, I'm sorry, this is not a how many officers per s- square mile, this is not a performance thing, this is nothing like that. This is just, if, if for any reason, we come to a financial situation where we have to do the attrition, if we ever come to a situation where, oh my goodness, we have way too many officers per blah blah blah, this is a, hey, at least we're not hiring more and then being put in a worse predicament, you know what I mean? That's all I'm trying to, just the wording of that, that's, that's, I hope I'm making sense.
And I, and in fairness, I just said there's three, 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 right now there are ten, so I'm saying, you, in, in a perfect world, in my opinion, you need nine, you need three, three, three. So, but right now we do have ten, so that right there is, but Westerville was paying half of that, Westerville is currently not paying half of that, so that's a big swing.
And even more.
This is like building my case every.
So, so here would be my recommendation, I think you have one too. What if we change it to, um, the police department is authorized to have eight full-time, um, with, um, council's approval, they can go up to ten full-time and two part-time.
That's, that's good, that sounds good, yeah.
Well.
Does that affect anything? I mean, it's just a budgeting pass.
Do we have ten?
That's what they have ten, correct.
That's what they told me.
But the way this is worded, this is adding two more part-time and you can assign a sergeant at any time without.
So, so because it takes council approval for the other two.
Not right now.
And that's what I'm saying, if we change this to council approval for the other two, if we change that, we would just have to approve.
Council approves every officer though, I think that's what I'm getting down to is like.
Well, you do, you do, and the probationary, but you'd have to, on the front end, before he even goes out and hires probationary out there, you'd have to.
But it makes you look like.
Yes, this is saying he can't open a position, a run position without council's approval if he already has eight officers.
Yeah, and Jeff and I are, um, I shouldn't say Jeff and I, but one of the things that we have been discussing quite a bit with, in light of a couple things,
Thank you.
is bringing it, bringing the, okay, so JP's been a part of it, Tommy, I think you've been a part of, you've been a part of it in the interviews. So we do the interview, the way the process works right now is we do the interviews. Um, I sign what's called a conditional offer, and that conditional offer just basically says, okay, if you meet all of these criterias and you pass this and pass this and pass this, and chief approves it, it moves forward, and then I swear him in. So there's not really like a process, even that I get detail, it, it's just I, I go to this swearing in, and then,
The answer is hold, other than.
Well, that's what we're trying to, and we've mentioned this to JP, or we've mentioned this to Jesse, that we are in the process of, the next time this happens, I will still sign the conditional, because in order to go to the next steps for them to do all of the background stuff, that needs to be done. So then what happens is, he will then bring documentation to me, I will then bring it to you, you guys approve it before we start getting uniforms and, like, they, we will have already still spent money, because the, you know, there's backgrounds and all that, but, but minimal. But before we actually uniform them, and this is the way I believe Blendon does theirs, if I'm not mistaken, is you guys are gonna start approving them with information that you guys are given, like, an actual summary of these particular officers. This is, you know, these are the pros, these are the cons, and I don't know if it's an executive session or outside, but you guys will actually get detail on enough information for you guys to make a decision versus going, hey, this is this person's name, we already hired him, they've been here for a week, there you go.
That's above and beyond what's in here, but I don't think you're wrong in that, I think that's a separate.
Yeah. And it's, and one aspect, it feels like we're almost, and, and I will say this, and I said this two days ago to some, to when we were having a conversation is, I've never stepped on chief's toes ever with anybody he's wanted to hire, whether I agreed or disagreed or any of that, I'm not going into detail, but at some point, there has been, there have been situations that I was not e- excited, um, and it's his department. And it's, you know, sometimes I feel like I'm stepping on toes or this or that, but I also feel like I'm taking that then, I don't wanna say I'm taking it away from you guys, but we're not doing it to where you guys are having a fair opportunity, so they've worked here now for six months before you guys actually get to make a real decision. And even at that, up until Josh, you guys were never given anything except for, ah, they're great. And I don't know that that's fair.
Yeah, I think that's a different issue.
And I'm, I'm not trying to step on anyone's toes, I'm just.
No, no.
You know, just.
No, you're not, no, you're not, this is easy.
This is about budget more than anything else.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's all.
This is where you're, that you're strong.
We have to be fiscally responsible for this village.
Especially after seeing the twenty twenty-six.
It's not, we're not, at this point in time, we're not saying, if we were to change this and go to a lower number, we're not saying you have to fire anyone.
Yeah, of course, no, no, not at all, not at all, not at all.
That's fair.
I, it's just saying.
This is not even a hiring freeze, this is just a, let's not put more.
I think the hiring freeze is fair.
Like again, if we say, if we say it's eight full-timers without council's approval,
Yeah.
and anything above and beyond, up to a cat, is with council's approval.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, yes, that's the same, yeah, that's all the same.
But you need to determine it when you, would they need to approve it before they did even interviewed them?
Putting it out there, on Indeed, wherever we do.
So you have the whole thing that was interviewed.
I would say. I would say before you put it out there.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's always.
You say, like, right, there's their position right now?
No, no, I'm not saying that.
I'm asking you.
It's always out there, if that makes sense.
Well, that, that.
Meaning, meaning somebody could come in any day and turn in an application.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and I don't mean it that way, but I'm saying, like, there's never like a post stage, and typically we don't really.
Yeah, 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 I would say that, yeah.
Well, here's the thing, okay, so what is this scenario, okay, somebody comes in and it's like, I really wanna work here. We don't really have any opening issues, chief comes to us and says, hey, I just found this guy, this guy's perfect, we have eight people, but I really need this ninth, they're magic and I have.
Like halfway through, but.
But then we open that position, now that position is open for that person to apply today.
Well, technically, how it stands right now.
No, that's what I'm saying, it, it would still work.
Well, yes and no, we would open that position, but in order, to be an equal opportunity employer, we have to interview every single person that it ties for, we can't just say.
No, I don't know that we, they, I.
Anyone that, anyone that meets the minimum criteria, we have to interview.
How do you have to open it for?
Meets the minimum criteria, I think that's where you're, I'm, I'm getting it, because we have some that maybe don't need that, like a platocertified or this or that, so yeah, that would make sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, that. Yeah, yeah, that. Yeah, but.
So yeah, if a janitor applies for the position, we all have to interview them, right, they have some.
All right.
No, but what if, I think, what if you find what you really want? You can open it.
Yeah, so we agree.
Yes.
I mean, I think, I think it's as simple as this, the police department has a chief, a lieutenant, and eight officers, however you wanna say it. And if you want more than that, you gotta come back and ask for more.
Thank you, that's what I'm trying to say, that's all I'm trying to say.
This is what our department is.
You can't afford anymore, but we'll think about it.
So Blendon had, uh, three officers had left up until the, up until Tuesday, because they didn't know if they were gonna pass it. And in the news, the police chief was on there and saying, yeah, and he was outrunning patrol. Listen, again, do you wanna compare, I looked at other ones, Bexley, whatever, it does, that side of it. Where do we fit in that equation? And right now, we're above every single one of them.
And we can come back, and we can come back to this later on, you know?
Well, I, I'm just saying, if we go to eight total, make that clear, if we go to eight total, okay? I still think that's high, but talking to Jeff, frankly, that puts us in a better financial spot in regards to his calculations. It puts us in green.
When you guys go home, and this is all I'm asking, humor me, because I, I was on council, and I did this, and I'm not sticking up, and I'm not in disagreements. Do eight-hour shifts.
Tiffany, listen, again, I don't wanna talk about performance and scheduling, I wanna talk about.
But you have to, because there's no coverage.
But I don't, we do, I think you can explain it to us from the staffing point, but it's just, I think we're just focusing on the budgeting.
But if you, if you want twenty-four hour service.
But.
I guess that's the question.
If, if you want me to answer that.
And so that's fair, that, that is fair, that, I mean.
Well, you're saying coverage for three people though.
No, 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 I'm saying.
I, I don't, that's why I don't wanna get into the conversation about managing, because.
No, we're not managing, I'm saying do twenty-four hour service, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and I'm not doing this, if you wanna do it real quick, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three eight hour, there's three eight-hour shifts per day. Cause it's eight, and I'm not saying that couldn't change, and I'm not arguing, I'm curious, that is a minimum of one officer per shift, what does that equate to? Without vacations, anybody on sick time, anybody, anything.
Three times seven, that's twenty-one shifts.
So twenty-one shifts, eight hours.
And five, if you work, five shifts a week.
You would only work forty hours a week, which is forty.
That's a minimum of four men, it, it has to be alone with four people.
So it's definitely five, just for one, with no vacation, no sick time, no anything, and that's a five.
I, I, I know the math, it's not that, it's, it's three people, Blendon does it.
Forgive me, I'm, I'm misunderstanding.
That's, that's, that's why I don't wanna get into the, into the management, because, I don't wanna get into the management, because there's easy numbers out here that show you people that do it.
Because there are times when Blendon is probably no officers on duty.
Okay.
No, they don't, they.
There's Minerva, Mifflin that has.
That's even worse.
She's saying, to do the math, I understand what Tiffany's saying, like, play cards on math.
This math, math, that math doesn't make sense.
It doesn't matter how big you are, if you're open twenty-four hours, you have to be open twenty-four hours.
Right, you have to have a bare minimum officer.
And Westerville does it with two point two.
What happens when we have an officer to work?
But you have a minimum of two.
We've never been in that situation.
But what if that happened?
Forgive me.
Right?
Sure.
So we need to have a minimum of two, because we need to see service to the resident.
Sure. We have five.
We're just running.
But it's not, no.
Per thousand.
We're not counting thousands, you have to have a bare minimum, you have to have a minimum amount.
Two point two is per thousand.
But we're talking about.
Guys, if you, I mean, honestly, I'm not, I'm not even, I, I, I don't, I wanna stop.
We're talking hours.
Listen, I, I'm gonna stop right now, it'll, it maths, it a hundred percent maths. If you guys don't understand, that Blendon has one point five officers per thousand.
But we're talking about.
They have ten thousand people.
It doesn't matter, you have to have a bare minimum.
Okay.
You could have two people, but you still need to have two officers to control those two people. You have to have a bare minimum of two officers in order to run a twenty-four hour service. And then past that, you can say, okay, all these extra people, whatever, we're still gonna have two officers per a hundred square miles, but you still have to have a, a minimum of two people, and that's what we're.
They're saying three here. So they're saying three, okay, make sure that's clear.
Are we changing the legislation?
Yeah, let's get that.
Because we're talking, we're talking per shift, and we're talking per shift.
Two different things.
And I totally understand, and, and agree with everything the mayor's saying, that full, full coverage is three people per shift.
Because that means, and there's never three people per shift.
I think ultimately, after this, after we change whatever this is, we have to decide as a council, are we still a village that can afford to do the three people per shift? Uh, uh, we're gonna have to have that conversation.
Oh, yeah, and I don't, and I don't think that's what we're, I, I don't, and again, Tony, please don't take this, I'm trying to math it just to me. Here's what I'm gonna tell you, this is what chief's going to show you, because this is what was shown to me a long time ago. And like I said, I know our current situation right now, we have people that have earned sick time, they've been here for almost ten years, and they're on an injury leave. So who, if, if we only had five people, we would be paying someone overtime, which is gonna add up way faster for twelve weeks. So you have to make sure that you have that coverage, or you end up in overtime situations, the holiday situations, and overtime with holiday is gonna be even worse.
So short staffed is two, short staffed.
So if you have three per shift, you only ever have two, then if one person's on vacation, I will tell you this. Reese worked last Friday, I mean, I'm just saying because I know, by himself last Friday. He, Corey worked by himself on Saturday, last Saturday, there were, he worked twelve, there was a couple people that worked twelve-hour shifts, because even with nine people, one person on injury, one person on, two people on vacation, that's what you went with.
No, and I don't, I'm just trying to explain it, is like, I feel like two is like, okay, I come in here and we're bare bones, and three is ideally what we're shooting for, but we may not be able to.
Not be able to, so I don't think that's the, I think that's what we're talking about, to be one that, I'm saying this is why we have three, that's what. Safety, the other thing that you always, that I'm gonna remind people of, is safety of officers. One officer in the village that is responding to, if you, you know.
When you have other divisions and departments, that will answer, on a, on a tough call, they will answer, I've read multiple articles, it's easy, it's out there.
But if they're on the.
And that's where you gotta understand, we'll go back to this, we're gonna go back to this, cause this, we'll, let's go to legislation.
I will say, someone said to me, I honestly can't, couldn't tell you who this is right now, to ask our police department how many other townships are responding to our calls, and I believe it's not that many right now.
Because they're not serious, that, that, that's the thing, you gotta understand, I gave you an example, these, there's five departments that showed up. The guys told me, the officer was here, he's in a picture on our website, and I'll never forget the guy, wonderful officer.
Show up for what?
Somebody breaking in my house. It doesn't matter when it was, you don't think they'll respond now?
Yes, I am saying.
Because I, I don't understand this conversation, that's why I didn't really wanna have it, go ahead.
I am saying, there is a current, something is happening in this village right now, where our local, the people around us will not respond to this village.
You gotta prove that to me, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm gonna be honest with you on that. We can say that all we want to.
Well, we can, we can pull reports, we can see.
There's a nationwide shortage.
There are people responding, which is it.
And the, the townships in particular around us are running short, I'm, I'm.
Everyone is short.
Mifflin is, yeah.
Are not fully staffed, they may not be able to respond in the way that they could.
I think, I think once Blendon gets back up, like, you have to understand, the sheriff's office is responding to the Mifflin calls. There is a recent new article about them now not even responding as quick as they were, they actually have a horror station there, they pulled that out, that was in our meeting a long time. And it was because, again, they're having a hard time being able to respond to their calls. And again, I think it depends on if it's first shift, second shift, third shift, it's, if it's, if whoever's short-staffed that week, I mean, I think that there are times in which you are a hundred percent correct, if you call, if, if it's called tone drops, Columbus is gonna show up, everybody's gonna show up from twenty minutes away, and what a tone drop is, is something of that nature.
Minerva Park didn't even show up to my house when there was.
That's like anecdotal evidence, like, that happened to you one time, and so you're gonna.
No, I'm, I'm just gonna give you another example, if you don't mind.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, Franklin County Sheriff showed up, US Marshal showed up to my house. What? What does it matter? It was five years ago, what does it matter? So they showed up to my house, Minerva Park did not, not because they weren't, they, they were told not to, so don't.
Okay.
Well, well, I'm just saying, there will be people showing up if there's an issue, it wasn't an issue with me and my family, don't worry about that, but I'm just saying, they showed up to my house. My point is, guys, we have to look at this more critically than what we are, that's what I'm saying.
And I'm not.
I'm gonna leave it, I'm gonna leave it at that, whether we agree on that or not, that's up to you guys. And, you know, whatever we propose, that's what Jeff asked me to say too, is that eight officers, total, no, no, no part-time, for now. And then we go from there.
I think that's exactly what I said.
And I did.
It's no more than eight, and the council needs to.
Hang on, I'm, I'm gonna stop there. And then what you guys should do, and this is me saying this, this is not anybody else, I don't know, Jesse, could you answer this question? When we do that, if we do that, however they wanna do that, is there a way to see, like, after they do it for a month or two, like, what an actual schedule looks like, maybe without the names on it? Cause I think there's, or are they allowed to look at it? There was something about they can't, maybe they just can't take a schedule out of here, or something like that, there's some sort of something that I was told a long time ago.
Oh, was it like a, like a dirty thing?
Safety, yes.
Yeah, we can figure out a way to.
So like covering up the names, but just so you could see what coverage looks like, and then if you think, and I mean, this is just me saying, as a good idea. Or maybe you guys should see what they've looked like for the last three months. Um, and I'm not saying that your legislation isn't perfect, but maybe that's something that we could look into, so they could see, and maybe they look at it and go, well shit, this is the problem.
Right.
I don't know, so, and, and again, I know at that point it might be micromanaging, but I understand where he's coming from this way, like, I do understand where he's coming from, but. As, it's still based on twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, if that's what you want, you have to do the math, like, you, again, five people is a perfect thing, but now you gotta take into account. Vacation, sick time, blah, 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 because they do earn it.
Here's what we have to solve tonight, because this legislation in, has their raises in it, we have to get this passed.
Yeah.
In two weeks, otherwise it doesn't go into effect the first year.
This is why.
If we don't have the money to pay for ten full-time officers and two part-time positions in the budget, then we need to change it to what we can afford, and if that number is big, then that's what we have to change it to. And that, that gets this done, we can come back and discuss all this other stuff on a future date, but we've gotta get this passed in two weeks, otherwise, another raise is on the first.
Just one thing, I just wanted to add that, when we talked about two persons on shift, you stated nine was the math. And that's protecting not only more importantly, residents, number two, also very important, is officer safety. Um, residents first.
Again, let's not, let's not get into the, no, let's, let's cap it at what we can afford right now, at eight.
Okay, eight. Okay, we'll do the eight, okay, that's good, that's very good.
With council's approval for anything above it, because we have ten, and imagine we'll have two, do we currently have ten officers?
We currently have ten officers, including the SRO that is on staff.
Okay. So if we pass this and say it's only eight, do we have to do something that allows the other two still be employed?
Jeff said no.
No, we shouldn't, it's just, it's just for this.
But they like move to Arizona, that we just.
So can we, can we change it to eight, and say anything above that requires council approval?
Yes. And as well as the, um, no additional sergeants or no more lieutenants.
So how does, how's that work in government then, so if somebody leaves at year end?
We don't hire them.
We don't hire them?
Right.
And there's, is there anything we have to do or anything?
So if somebody just decides to quit tomorrow, we just wouldn't, I mean, he would be, he would basically, or we would come to you and say, uh, we. But Chief would come to you guys and say, I really wanna hire this person, because I, we're, we're struggling with something. And then you guys would make the decision, I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
So I think the, the two changes to this are take it full-time, this is a match, without council's approval or any inhibition.
Okay.
Only one sergeant.
Correct.
One sergeant, one we can, but there's a change.
More than one sergeant, yep.
Correct, thank you.
Okay. So that's the.
So take out part-timers, one sergeant, take it full-time, everything else comes back to you guys.
Yeah, just in case.
Yeah, and we can always, like, I am always in favor of part-time.
Do you let Jeff know that, is that what you're doing?
I will let Jeff know that, um, I don't think he, but he just said he wasn't here Monday, or he will be here Monday, so I will come in and talk to him. And I will have him get that right back out to you guys, in case I screw up, or he types it in wrong, that way you guys can see it way before Thursday's meeting.
Do we need a school resource officer in there as well?
I think it, I'm gonna say this.
Cause we don't have one.
Well, I guess, okay, so here's, let me ask you guys this, let me ask you guys a question. And maybe your answer is no, and I'm not trying to talk you into anything, please don't think that. Do you want to do a line that says, seven plus a resource, potential resource officer, eight plus the potential of a resource officer, or do you wanna remove the resource officer, you guys are no longer doing it, end of story? And that's kinda stepping on Chief's toes, and I don't know.
I don't. All I wanna say is, my daughter's at Minerva Park, she knew the officer, she did not know about any incidents, um, but I will say she didn't know. So, I know, but it is what it is. The reality is, is that I don't think we should be responsible for a resource officer, I think we're too small of a community. And I, I love the schools, my daughter's there, I get it, um, but I just do not think so. I find it odd, because I knew the, the resource officer at South very well, and, you know, they were Westerville City, I mean, that's what it was, you know? And I just think we're too small of a community, that's all I wanna say, sorry.
No, I, I get it, however, can Westerville post an officer in our village?
With an agreement, you can.
Yeah, and I think that is the follow-up question, could we potentially still have a contract with them, that if they take it away, and they take it away?
Is there anything we need to be concerned about, if there is a contract outside that?
With the school?
With the school, I mean, we've already taken them out.
No, I mean, anything, any contract we have with them would have in there that it's contingent upon us.
Okay.
Yeah, we just need to shoot everything, yeah.
It's funding the, the position, yeah.
So do you guys, and I'm just asking, and do you agree or disagree, do you want that whole line removed, I'm, I'm just asking.
Can it just be like, just for us to be?
But if you put it.
I'm, I, I, of all of this, that might be the one I ask Chief about for weeks, right?
Yeah.
Like, that's like, that's like really good in the house.
But then would it be eight, and then an SRO, since they pay fifty percent of it, or do you guys want it to say seven, and then a resource officer, but do not forget, the resource officer is nothing to us?
No, I would like, I think based on this math, it's eight, yeah.
Eight, lost that. If Chief says, okay.
Yeah, cause that, that's like not helpful for us, you know what I mean, just seven.
And then you guys can change it again, after, you guys have, well, you guys are also gonna see him before that meeting, he'll be here, and for the, so we can do the legislation based on what he tells us, and then you guys, you guys can change it.
We can change.
Yeah, but I would like, I think eight, based on this kind of math, and I do staffing, like, at our office, that, like, that math, is you gotta have.
And as of right now, we do not have, I, I don't know that we have the thought to put some of that back in there, but again, just contracts with Westerville, and that I don't, don't wanna creep, but this is technically not going into effect until January anyways.
Right.
So, that might be something that we would just end the contract, at the end of the year anyways.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Should our lieutenants be hourly?
We talked about this, and I'm gonna give you my answer, and I'm gonna tell you what I was told, and this is a Chief question, or I don't know who, Jeff or somebody. I was, which this kinda didn't really make sense to me, but I was told that because they're a patrolling lieutenant, they can't be on salary. And I do not know that that's accurate, and I just said that on the record, I don't know that that's accurate, that's what I was told once. So that would be a question to ask Chief.
I think, I, I will, I called another department once and asked them if they're salary or hourly, I went with Blendon, and they told me they were salary.
Do you know if they're patrol, and maybe they are?
No, then I didn't ask that question.
And I don't know that, I don't know why it would matter.
But I'm just, it's a leadership role, you know?
Yeah, that feels like.
And it feels, it can feel icky if someone is.
Well, here's a great reason as to why, no, I'm not throwing stones, but when it comes to holidays.
Yeah. That's exactly where you're going with that.
I mean, if you're a manager, when you're a leader of people, and you need the OT, I don't wanna say that it's a budget play, but I, I say, you know, well, the lieutenant needs to stay later, the chief needs to work overtime. They're not waiting, because they are in charge. And that's when, when, when the kids are away, mom and dad have to stay, type of thing, and that's, I don't know, I, it just popped in my head, it's not, it's just a thought.
I'm, I think that's a great question, cause I would actually like to know that the answer as to why we don't have that, but I've asked it before, and I feel like that was the answer I got.
I don't have anything else in that, I'm sorry, I'm just bringing it up as I saw.
I, I do, I'm sorry it's late, but I think we still have to discuss rules of council, because again, we don't have another meeting before, um, we pass this. No, the Wiki amendment.
And I know you guys wanna talk about, I passed off the work session, just, July was the one date that Barb had questions, problems, concerns with, and not really, she just wanted to know, do you guys really wanna have one on the second?
No.
Um, do you wanna move the work session to the ninth, and then the sixteenth, and then the follow-up question is, I think the budget is the reason why we do two meetings in July, but I will remind everybody that every July, we have a problem having four people here.
Yeah.
And I'm just gonna tell you, I'm gonna miss two of those meetings, I'm just looking at it, not the second, but, I'll be here, I'd be here the second, but not the night, the sixteenth.
Okay.
Jason, I had read over the rules of council, I didn't really have any questions, personally, but I, I would ask, just, how does that work, how does this work?
Yeah, there's only two things that I feel like we probably should discuss. Um, one is, uh, the repeat absence, and I only bring it up because we did do a significant increase in council salary. For, um, the position, and, you know, right now, I think it's two months.
Two months, yep.
You know, that's, that's up to six meetings potentially that someone's missing.
For the year, right?
In a row.
In a row.
In a row.
I hope you.
You know, if they miss six, now, again, we also vote at if, if someone gets to keep their salary, right? We do the roll call, and if someone's absent, the whole point of us saying, are they excused or not, is to say, if we vote no, they're not excused, they don't get paid. It's really kind of how it goes, right?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Then that's why we do it.
Is there a yearly amount of missing meetings, I'm just curious?
That's what's in the rules of council.
Just the, just the two months?
It's just two consecutive, two consecutive.
Oh, yeah, full-time service.
It basically is John Aban.
Probably.
They're five.
I think if you're not here three times in a row, without, you know, like a doctor's excuse.
I got a doctor's excuse for you.
Well, I, I think, here's what I will say, this group we've never had a problem with, we actually did this because we had a problem a while back.
I agree, I just.
But it needs to be fixed, it needs.
I just wanna have the discussion, because again, we've gone up significantly on what council will make in the next year or so.
About.
We can leave it if you want, I just wanna bring another discussion.
I'd say we tighten that to one month consecutively, without being medically sick.
If you tighten it though.
Or medically emergent.
Well.
If you tighten it, that's three meetings, though.
Like, what if I get called in three weeks in a row?
The hard part is if you really are sick on one, you have a vacation that was already pre-planned four months ago on one. And then it just so happens that if you have kids or something, that, I, I think three is legit, I think once you start getting over that, that's a problem, and I think the other part is, is again, it has to be consecutive, so.
Yeah.
I know this isn't the group that does it, but, I, I'm, I'm in agree, I mean, I think tightening it a little bit might be.
It may, they were going from four to three, basically, seems.
And we vote on it, right, or?
And you could be like, oh, yeah, that was a good one.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, again, I, I, I don't think anybody's ever been even close to that, and I think the follow-up question is, does that include consecutive meetings or consecutive council meetings?
It doesn't specify in.
Consecutive council meetings.
Cause I think.
It's like, that's like months, yeah, sure.
To me, that's a big deal, whether it's meetings or council meetings, because if you start counting in all of the different work sessions and all that kinda stuff, like, if you have a.
Job.
Work session on a Monday, or something like that, and you missed, I mean, I mean, so I just think it needs to be clarified.
The independence of work sessions of.
So that it would just be council meetings?
I don't care, you go, I don't know if I care about this at all, to be honest, I think we don't have a problem.
What's the next one?
Yeah, I don't think we have a problem.
The other one is about the five, the three minutes.
Cool, I was gonna, I, I know you guys are gonna hate my guts when I say this, but we are here, I was gonna say five minutes, go back to five, we're here for the people that didn't.
That's fine.
Have it five minutes.
I wanna hear all of it.
The industry standard's gonna be three minutes, I mean, all the, all the public pension systems have three-minute, uh, you know, public, but there's more people, I'll give you that. But I don't, it's really up to you, but I'm just letting you know that that's pretty factual out there. I looked it up because of, yeah, here, because I was like, wow, you people, you know, JP wanted five minutes, I was like, wow, what, what it is, and everything I read was three minutes.
And, and I, I can't argue that, all I can say is that it used to be five minutes, we're smaller, I know some people, I know why we changed it to pass, but, um. This is a small neighborhood, and like, their voices matter, and I want, I wanna hear it, like, I, I think.
I don't disagree with you, I think if you have to talk more than three minutes on the council.
That's part of it.
And I'll be.
Tighten that up, the getting to where you dress is quicker than some of the stuff.
Oh, wow.
They're like, practice in front of the mural.
Sometimes, God, I sound like a jerk, but, sometimes people just need to learn how to speak.
That's true. I told, I told certain people to give solutions to, because it's like, that we're talking about, by the way, I'm like.
There were, there have been meetings that we've sat in, and I'm like, you said this the last time we were here, what's, what new information are you giving this off?
And, and I think that they have other forms of communication via email, and all of that, to where, you know, you guys can address them in different directions. I think the hardest part with this, without making this meeting any longer, is, you know, again, if you're coming in here and you have a concern about XYZ, I mean, that's great. But, like he's saying, if you're coming in here every single week, talking about the exact same thing, because you don't like something that's already been done, you can't, I mean, it. What, I, I'm gonna talk about the streets down here, at this point, you can come in here seven more times, the project is ninety percent done, what do you want me to do at this point? I know you don't like it.
It looks great. Five minutes is still not gonna be enough time.
There you go.
Ten minutes will still not be enough time, why aren't you guys obeying me? I thought this was citizen obey.
I, I am more apt to have a conversation as council, to an email. That was sent to us, saying, hey, I, we received this email from, and we've done this, right?
We've done that.
We've received this email from, from a person in the village, let's take a minute to discuss it, as opposed to sitting there, you know. Cause we don't reply, we don't reply, like, and we shouldn't, like, it's not a conversation.
I would agree with that, I think the issue is.
I think it's more effective when people email us, and then we can have a conversation. Not that I don't want them to come to meetings and share their opinions.
And they get an unlimited amount of time to type that email.
Exactly.
I got a question, can I just stick to my five minutes, and you guys can outvote me for three?
You can do whatever you want.
Absolutely. You want that, you need that for your ego?
Okay, so that sounds like we're not really gonna change anything, the one thing I did have to change, though, is on the signup. I did say to, to put at the top of it, you have three minutes, um, rule, to basically put the rule that says you have.
Okay.
And basically, by signing up for this, you agree to those terms and conditions.
It's not, it's not a question, it's, or, it's not a question, how do you say it, um, it's not a question and answer, it's a citizen's comments, that, at the top two. And also, can they cannot stack their time? Should we?
Yes, that's a good one, yeah, yeah.
Um, to spell it out, I know we did, you were at that meeting the last time, but we said, but, we could, we didn't allow like to tap it at the vampire.
Right. And a lot of.
Counselor camera, he stepped in.
I, I wasn't sure whether this either was implemented or changed or whatever, and, and I'm just curious, when someone comes and it is actually a question, was it discussed at all? Like, how do we figure out who's gonna respond to them?
The mayor or president of council may recognize any non-member of council for the purpose of asking a re-question to clarifies the citizen, the topic before council, so it's, you, I think you can ask clarifying questions. And sometimes we go off the rails, but.
And, and I'm not saying clarify or ask questions, I feel as though people come in, and sometimes they're genuinely asking us a question, and then they don't know who's gonna get back with them. And I'm just wondering if that's ever been discussed, you know, should we say something like, well, Kathy's in charge of safety, this sounds like a safety issue, she'll get back with you, or something like that.
I think that needs to be done, no, I don't feel like it is being done, I will say ninety percent of the time, it's just, they come in and make a comment. And yes, it's very rare that they do have questions, but I think, I think if we're able to answer the question, a lot of times we do, um, occasionally, like if Eric can answer it or whatever, but most of the time, the question that they're asking. Is more of a Jesse question, or an Eric question, or not necessarily, maybe a Chief, like, if Chief is sitting here, but it's usually not, I mean, in my seven years, I don't feel like there's been. There should probably have been less than five that was really an afterthought, quite an answer, it's very few and far.
Is it okay if we would say, hey, listen, if you would like to give me your phone number, or I can.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just, I mean, I think that's, it's not customer service, but it's kinda customer service on our part to go, hey, let me follow up with you, would you like me to call you, I can call your number, you can take mine, or whatever.
Let me look into it, because again, I think most of the time, people are in here, you know, this is three foot, not two foot, and da, 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 and I'm like, okay, like, I don't know how to respond to that, cause I don't have a tape measure, I have it down there.
I don't know what you're talking about, I'd love to look into it, can I take your number, and I'll get back to you.
Exactly. Um, you have an email, you have an email from somebody, I sent it to you because, no, just a legislation, like I said, I just, I've had a rough week. Um, this is sent October thirty-first, this is just for you guys, I do not wanna talk about it right now. I only sent it to them because he's president and he's this, you guys can all look at it and I can send it to all of you, um, but I just didn't wanna get into all that. I also have, got an email just because we're talking about it, um, Jesse, is he free to go?
Yeah, sorry, Jesse.
You're, you're more the type, you're.
Sorry, guys.
Daylight savings time, I can see him like, I know.
So we, um, this person came in, so I didn't respond to this person because they actually came in that same day that they sent this email. Um, trash pickup didn't happen on the early growth, they called them, they came back out, is my understanding. Um, what's being done to assure basic services and provided to the residents, has anyone informed trash, recycling, leaf pickup and all of that? Um, the answer's the same as it's been from day one, they're doing the best that they can, we're doing the best that we can, it's a project, it's ever-changing, we're trying to get it done as fast as we can, it looks amazing.
Is it really a good spot though? Is it in a good spot, Stacey, is it like, it's gonna get done here in the next?
Oh yeah, it's, I mean, go, if you haven't seen it, go look at it today, because I'm gonna show you guys a couple of pictures, I'll walk around and do that.
That's good.
But anyways, I've, I've seen this post on Facebook, obviously I didn't respond, cause I will not respond to anybody on Facebook, because that'll just get me in trouble. Um, but this person sent me an email and then they were, they came in, Barb handled it, she did talk to him, I did not reemail them back, so I did not forward it to you guys because he had already come in. Um, so if you see somebody that says that I didn't respond, that was because they came in and did talk to Barb. Um, number two, the other one that I got today, um, have not responded, this person that just came in at five o'clock today. Um, what's the latest on unpaid taxes, the tax issue, um, if they're not collected by all means, um, possibly then they are optional to pay. Um, this person has, has been on council before, it's, he's, they're getting frustrated, people are frustrated because people still aren't paying their taxes, we know that. We are working as fast as we can to try to get more subpoenas out, um, and I'm just gonna be blunt, I'm gonna say this on record, there's just been so much other stuff going on. I don't wanna say that it's been put on the back burner, it is not on the back burner, we are still doing it.
I think it's actively being done.
It is actively being done, people still aren't responsive, if they don't respond and they won't respond and they aren't gonna pay. It's not that it's, I mean, we just can't go to their house and take money out of their checking account, I mean, we are doing everything that we can, I feel the frustration, everybody knows my frustration with it. And yes, I would like to go to their, I would like to send the police to their house and take them to Franklin County, like, I agree with people, like it's frustrating, it's an extra vacation or two for me a year that I'm paying, why aren't you? I get it, but here's what I will also say, if you can't afford to pay your rent and you can't afford to buy groceries, this is the last thing you're concerned about. So I don't wanna sound insensitive, I, but I also don't think it's fair that other people, so I don't have a solution other than the fact that we are working as fast and accurate. To at least force as many people to just get it fixed, and I do think that there's a lot of people that just need it fixed.
Need it fixed, yeah.
It's not that they owe it, it's just they need it fixed, and I, I've been there, no, I, I've been there, so, um, I, and you know, I deal with my kids and do all of that and it is what it is. Taylor's lived in Cincinnati for two years, in Cincinnati has her apartment and I'm still dealing with it, so. And everybody can see that, she does not live at my house, as much as I wish she does. So that's what I would say about that, um, that was all I have. I know, and so I just, I don't think it's a tonight conversation, but he's legislationally, that's why I sent it to him, he's president, um.
That, I, yeah.
I know, yeah.
I'll do.
Yeah. So, um, we got the estimates for Miller Landscaping, I lied, I have more, I'm not gonna go into it, I think he just sent it to a couple of you guys. Um, Miller Landscaping and the person that we had before, I think it's great to talk about, but not at ten o'clock at night.
Is it like a real plan? I just wanna, it's like, I mean, just passing it out, it's like, here's what I would.
There's no much difference price-wise, but Miller was more detailed than, um.
I'm looking for a detailed plan to be like, okay, here's our drawing, fix this or do this again. And that's, if we could get that for free, that would be great too, but.
Yeah, there's not much difference.
Like, do you know what I'm saying? It's like, this is the master plan.
This is not, this is just to maintain the, this is not.
This is not, correct, yeah.
Don't let your dogs out, there's a coyote in your driveway between the building and your house.
Which.
At the house.
There won't be if you let your dogs out.
The church people just messaged you, you said, told them that, sorry, I know.
Oh yeah, it lives past our house, yeah, it got Tina for it, yeah.
There's, there's a four hundred dollar difference between the two days, and I heard London is four hundred dollar smarter.
I'd use it if I never need.
Jeff just got through, so I think he'll, he'll review them a little closer, he did say he was a little more favorable to lower one only because of the more details. Um, that right, so.
On the low worries.
Can anybody answer this question? What do you guys want? You don't want July second?
No, no.
The ninth, sixteenth, and twenty-third.
Yeah, I want second.
Okay. Everybody's gonna miss one, and, and not everybody, but most people are gonna miss one in July, I, I am, so I'll be the first one.
I actually have to.
Yeah.
I might have a perfect attendance this year, so.
You are not.
If you, fine, you know what?
I think you should get a hundred dollar bonus.
If you have perfect attendance, cause you don't care about your family, that sounds not fair.
I think you should get a free day pass for the pool.
From last year.
It's an expired day pass.
Oh, no, you can go down there. You can, you can get in the pool this summer, go for it, go, go for it.
I know a guy.
I know a guy.
I know a guy, I know a girl. I have a, I know a, a person that their baby pool is.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I think we're good, it's got all night.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, this is, we have to do this.
I know, this is.
Yeah, I think telling people Tony was the right one and they lose their mind.
Um, it's good because, you know, we got a lot of work to do and we made some great progress this year and I think we'll do all that in the next.
Charge.
Two years.
Well, seriously, your plan.
I'm really thankful about the schools, not just for selfish reasons, but for tax reasons, cause income tax, cause the, the amount of jobs that they had, they were gonna have to cut, that would, that would affect us.
That would affect us big time.
It would, it would matter.
Tommy would have been teaching them for free.
Justin has the Minerva Park letting that pass because. That too, I was surprised, that passed with greater potential.
Yeah, you need to.
Yeah.
A lot of people were gonna have it.
Why did I vote for that one part? What are we worried about?
Alright, motion to adjourn?